Okay, well, I'd like to call the meeting of the Strategic Initiatives Committee to order. All the members are present. We got one item on the agenda right now, which is to consider lease proposals for the Village Center lower level. Rebecca, do you want to give the background on this?
Yes, sorry, my microphone was stuck. An RFP was let for utilization of the vacated North Shore Health Department space in the lower level of Village Center. We received two proposals. One of the future uses, which would be a real estate office, would require zoning amendment and would impact all P1 properties, including schools and religious institutions. And so before we proceeded, really, we wanted to get check-in, number one, with Strategic Initiatives, and see whether there was an appetite for considering rezoning within the P1 district. And also recognizing that the proposals were very different. One falls within the scope of P1, is not offering to contribute revenue, which I know was actually the generator of this conversation in terms of how can we generate alternative revenue for the village. And then the latter does provide for an annual revenue stream, but would require consideration of rezoning. So before we got too ahead of ourselves and spent time reviewing both proposals, we wanted to check in first to see if there was a recommendation from this committee that could be provided for the board, and so we could also have the board weigh in, because we'd also would prefer not to be in a situation where the committee goes for a period of time to consider both proposals and then provides the board with a recommendation that perhaps they may not be willing to consider. So Trustee McGovern and Director Grebentrog were both present to review proposals. We have Sue Bronson and Elizabeth Price here, representing the Senior Resource Center and Elder Services Advisory Board. So I'll leave it open to Matt and Bart, if you have any other additional comments you'd like to share.
Sure, and we, you know, two proposals, and, you know, like Rebecca said, they're both very different. The original impetus for this was to try to find additional revenue for the village, so that is one thing to consider. Of course, there's the great services provided by the Senior Resource Center that are really important to the village, so there wasn't really a strong feeling one way or the other yet to like get into the details and try to make a decision. And there may be others interested still in submitting applications. We're not sure yet, but there's been other people that have approached the village about potentially applying as well. But that's kind of getting ahead of ourselves, and for the matter at hand, you know, one of them would require a rezoning. So personally, I'm okay with considering new applications that would require a result. I don't feel like the proposed use would be all that different from what's already allowed, but I'd be glad to hear any comments from the other members. Any discussion?
I think, you know, my gut reaction is I would love to see this sort of stay within a village public space, you know, so I would, my gut reaction after reading the two proposals at hand, I think the value the village gets from the Senior Resource Center and the potential of what we could do with that space outside of just the Senior Resource Center group, I think, is an extremely valuable service to our community. And, you know, it kind of, you know, for me, it's a bit of a trade-off to generate revenue with another tenant, for example, Sophia Berry Real Estate Group. I would entertain waiting to see what other applications come through. At this current time, I would probably, I would definitely be leaning towards utilizing this space for community sort of focused spaces, whether we divide it up with the Senior Resource Center, or they take the space, whatever that may be. But I think my gut, my initial gut reaction is to keep the space within village, sort of, you know, within village space.
Suppose I'm next. You know, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a sort of a tough position, right? I mean, obviously, the village really could use the revenue. I think I'm with Arthur. You know, I would like to see, I mean, it's a village resource. I'd like to see it used by villagers. There's certainly a need for Senior, you know, Senior Resource Center. You know, if we went this route, obviously, we're leaving quite a bit of money on the table. And so I'd like to see, you know, a lease that goes two or three years, as opposed to sort of an oncurring, ongoing or recurring lease, you know, no rental fee, utilities and maintenance all covered by the village. Yeah, I mean, I think I'm fine with that route, but I, you know, I want to reserve the right to, should an opportunity arise, or should we need the space, or should something happen where we can get out of it, with all due respect, you know, where, you know, if we need it for the library, or we need it for, you know, we are in that big of a crunch for dollars, that there's still the opportunity to go a different route. So I would like to do, you know, a two-year lease, maybe a three-year lease, Ted. But I don't know if that would work with the potential tenants, if it's still worth it if we put that on.
So just to clarify, the two or three-year lease that you're referring to, is that for both of the organizations, who submitted proposals?
Well, one was definitely a two-year lease. The second proposal with the Senior Resource Center wasn't going. I don't know if that becomes a month-to-month, or if that is...
Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I mean, a month-to-month doesn't make any sense to me, because then there's no guarantees for the Resource Center. But, you know, if they were both a two-year, all things being equal, you know, I don't love losing the, but I'd rather have forward rent. That would be the need.
You'd just like to make another comment, too, that, you know, this obviously came up when we discussed rezoning for the church, and I do think there are just ample opportunities in our business district for realtors. I know there's plenty of realtors in the community, and there's, everybody's looking for space, and there are plenty of spaces available in Shorewood for offices for real estate agents. So I'd like to put that out there. This space below us, connected to the library, connected to Village Hall, is sort of special. It's a public place, and I feel that we should sort of be a good steward of that and continue on that mission. We do have, obviously, folks from the Senior Resource Community here, and if there is time, and everybody's open to it, I'd love to hear a little bit more about their vision for the space and what they think that's going to look like and what they want to do with it.
Hello, Elizabeth Price, Director of Senior Services. So, right now, with due respect, Trustee Kudo, the two-year lease probably wouldn't be good if we were going to actually go through with the renovation that the Benjamin Fund would fund. So we look at this space as the Senior Resource Center has been cramped in the office. It's limited our ability to engage volunteers and to utilize community resources effectively. So we definitely are looking for more office space to help us out with that, to help us be more efficient and more active. So the recent sustainability study that the Elder Services Advisory Board undertook, you know, found something that we actually found the last time we did a study, which is that seniors in the community, they don't really have any space that's senior-specific, and that they're looking for something that is senior-specific. So we've heard that time and again. And so we would have a senior-specific space. It would also be nice to have a space that we could control, much like the library program room. That's such a, that size space is sort of the size space that we're looking for with that flexible furnishing, but one where we wouldn't have to be lifting the heavy chairs and stacking them back and preparing them for the next community group. It would be nice to have a space that we could utilize on our own. There are lots of ways that the Senior Center could be more active in the community. And just off the top of my head, recently, we've been dealing with a lot of issues at River Park Apartments, and I would dearly love to find some solutions for some of the issues that we're finding, and that would take us engaging some members of the community that might have some legal expertise, or some other social work expertise that could help us address some of the situations in a way that we haven't been very successful in addressing. But just having a Shorewood-specific stock box program would be something that we've kind of tossed around. So we haven't really gone forward with any of these ideas, because we haven't had the space to use. So we do have the benefit of the Benjamin Fund to help us with the renovation, to create a space that we think would be really community-focused and beneficial for the entire community.
Do you have ideas on the renovation costs, or is that something you haven't kind of approached yet?
No, I have no idea.
Would you also be open to, and this is all hypothetical, you could, you know, cross this bridge when we get there, but, you know, sharing the space with other community groups, other sort of Shorewood-focused groups, or would the Senior Resource Center require the whole space?
Well, we would want the whole space. That's what the proposal is. And then in the evenings, that it could be usable through the local half like the other spaces, or when the Senior Center isn't utilizing the space, it could be put out there.
Thank you.
Sue Bronson from the Elder Services Advisory Board. So I led the focus groups with folks, and what I heard just repeatedly from them with no prompting was to have space to go to be with other people. So important to them. I envision, and this is just me personally, I envision that there could be like somebody from the rec department who is focused also on older adults. I think the more people who think about older adults from different perspectives could use that space together. But I think the seniors are first.
Now, hear me out. We just rezoned our P1 spaces for bakeries. Do you think the seniors would be interested in baking, and we could get them all to start a little bakery with the seniors? No, I'm half joking, but, you know. Well, hey, there's a lot of knowledge, institutional knowledge that we don't want to lose, and there's something, food brings people together. So, you know, there's a lot of opportunities around food and community, and, right. All right, thank you.
I don't have any more questions.
Okay, I would like to just kind of bring the committee back to what's on the agenda today, which is just, you know, not picking one proposal or the other, but considering whether staff should consider applications that don't meet current zoning, and that's what we have to make a recommendation on today to the larger board. And I still think I would just kind of like to retain that flexibility of considering other applications, even if we, you know, that doesn't influence, you know, what the final decision would be for the space, because we would still consider the current applications or any others that would come in. But I, personally, I'd like to just, you know, retain that flexibility to at least consider the other ones that are out there.
Can I ask sort of where we are in the process, and how much longer the application process would continue, and, you know, if we go that route, say, keep it open, honey?
So it was, and Bart and Trustee McGovern, you can correct me, but when we got both proposals, and we're trying to compare apples to apples, obviously, we ran into an issue, because it was more of an apples than an orange, based upon what we would need to do. So before proceeding with a more detailed review of one or both, we paused and desired to come back to this group to get direction, because it was, it would direct how we reviewed the applications, given the direction from, the recommendation from Strategic Initiative or the board. It was the deadline on the RFP has closed. If the board wanted to reopen it, which is something they have the purview to do, they could continue to leave it open. That's all direction I'm here to receive, take based upon the pleasure of the group.
I mean, do you anticipate, was there a lot of, were there a lot of questions about it? But we only received two proposals. Are the two proposals kind of the max of what we saw interest-wise, or?
We saw, well, I'll speak for myself. I took two other groups through the space. One that wanted to look at it for purposes of a co-working environment. And then the second was more resource-based for the community. So that would incorporate some level of partnership with the school district. There've been a group of people talking in the past about trying to provide, you know, a location for students with needing additional resources and connecting within the community. So they also came to review the space, but did not submit that, or a proposal.
Does that mean the Oriental Theater's engaged, interested? Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm fine. Fine. But...
If that were the, how the group directed tonight, this would then go to the board for the first meeting in September. We'd have that discussion with the board, and then we'd continue review of one or both of those applications.
I would be definitely leaning in the direction that Trustee Kudo is. You know, I've seen that the Senior Resource Center is a little far off on actually coming up with plans, budgeting, and like scope of what renovations may look like. It seems like that's probably going to take you guys. If we were to move forward, this saying, said, this could be your space, that might take six months, or four months, five months, almost a year to start to develop. So I'd be leaning on just, you know, I'm kind of like, you know, leaning towards going in the direction of the Senior Resource Center, but I'm also in the direction, you know, also open to seeing what else might work in there, too. But for the sake of tonight's conversation, if we were to close it, I would like to see the Senior Resource Center take over that space.
Someone want to make a motion?
I move to recommend that the Village Board reject proposals from non-permitted use.
Second.
Double-checking, that's the correct motion?
Yes, because really, the only thing that you're being asked to provide guidance on tonight is whether or not we should be considering uses that are currently not permitted.
What I will say, though, is if we're, you know, we do this, we start moving forward, if, you know, if nothing has happened in like six months, then I would want this to come back.
I mean, I think, I think it's coming back either way, because this is only a motion to consider whether we should hear application that would require...
Yeah, I'm just saying that, let's say this gets passed us, it goes to the board, gets passed the board, and then it's in the hands of the Senior Resource Center. If there's no movement in the period of time, I'd like to come back and, yeah, and take a look at this again. I just don't, I don't want it to sit out there forever. I'd like there to be some timeline, some understanding with...
And that's why I kind of think about, you know, if we were just to keep it open with the, you know, keep it open, not close it, but close it to non-zoned, non-appropriately-zoned business organizations or organizations, I think that would be almost fair, right? Because if the wheels are spinning with the Senior Resource Center, they, it's just not working, but we have another group, a community group, that has the sort of the energy to come in and put it together. I'm open to seeing that as well. But right now, we don't have any of that. Senior Resource Center is the only one, and I'd love to move forward with them. That was kind of, you know, I think, yeah. So I'm open to any way we want to word it, but I think for the sake of tonight's conversation, you know, I second Trustee Kudo's motion, so go from there.
Then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion carries to one. And then I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Okay, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this evening's Department of Public Works Committee meeting. Meeting is started at 6:21. All trustees are accounted for and present. Tonight, we have two agenda items. The first item is to review and the possible recommendation of a request for no parking on North Prospect Avenue within the intersection of East Shorewood Boulevard. Tonight's presenter is Bart Grebentrog.
Thank you, Chair Ursink, and we have the applicant online as well, I believe. And so what is before us tonight is a request for no parking within the intersection of Prospect and Shorewood. It's a misaligned intersection that I'm sure you're probably familiar with, and if not, the overview in your packet perhaps provides a good picture of why this is more unique than a typical intersection. So it's offset east-west, Shorewood Boulevard is. And there's also a number of curb ramps within the intersection that don't necessarily lead to crosswalks across the street, and so there is some general confusion perhaps with where pedestrians are expected or should be crossing. To that point, staff is in favor of recommending that no parking signs be installed both south and north of the curb ramps along Prospect Avenue. However, we do somewhat differ with the applicant who had requested that the no parking zone extend from the north crosswalk all the way to the driveway to the north. And so staff did believe that there was enough vision or clearance there that another parking space could have been preserved. So within your packet, there's a recommendation from staff to proceed with no parking in those two locations. But as I mentioned, the applicant did make it clear to me after the packet was released that the request was for larger. So I guess we're here to discuss any questions that you might have with staff recommendation or with the application.
Can you walk us through on the map, exactly, which is?
Is it possible to share memo, Becky, or? So on the one with the highlighted colors, that's the way you're looking at, the applicant would like that red zone on the north to extend all the way up to that driveway.
As opposed to just the crosswalk?
Right. So the standard Village regulation is that there's no parking 15 feet from a curb ramp within a crosswalk. And so that one in the, that one there starts at a curb ramp and goes 15 feet, but there is additional space there for one parked car. I do have a photo of a car that was actually parked there, there. That's, that's the image I'm referring to. And so if a car is parked north of that, when I visited the site, I was able to see the entire intersection, and I do have a photo of that in there as well.
Is this actually a car that's parked in front of a driveway in this picture here?
That car is parked in front of what appears to be a curb ramp. It's a very large curb ramp, but there is no driveway. It's in a 3912. Yeah, so I don't know how that was installed at that particular width. I took a photo as well that I shared with, is it Shayna or Shanna? Sorry, I don't want to get it wrong.
It's Shayna, you got it.
Are you seeing the photo now as well?
I am, thank you, yep.
This is the photo that I took last week, so that van is parked in that space that would be preserved as a parking area. And so when I visited the site, standing back from the stop bar, I agreed that 15 feet from the curb ramp made sense, just because it's so unique and needs to be signed for clarity, but I did not see the need for extending it. So...
Thank you, Bart.
May I comment at some point?
Just one second, ma'am, please. Before we go to the public, do you guys have any comments?
I mean, it doesn't look like there's any shortage of parking in this area, you know, it's just residential. So is there any reason why not just give the bigger buffer?
So it's just following general practice of how the village regulates parking. So as I mentioned, we do prohibit parking from within 15 feet of a curb ramp or four feet of a driveway. In this instance, there is space there that would allow for parking in the general sense of things. I acknowledge the intersection is unique, but as I mentioned, when I went over there, I didn't see anything blocking the view of the intersection. So this is just, staff's recommendation represents what a standard regulation would look like if there were crosswalks within that intersection. There are not crosswalks in the intersection. So for example, on the west side of the street, just south of Shorewood Boulevard, there's an X there. There's a curb ramp there that does not lead east across the street. If there was one there, then we definitely would extend it further north to the driveway, because you're expecting pedestrians to cross there. And so in talking with DPW, no one's familiar with why this was designed and/or not, you know, updated at any point in time, but there are one, two, three, four, five, six curb ramps that don't lead across this.
Trustee Silkbrand, do you have any comments or questions? Yeah, please. Shayna? Love to hear from you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it so much. I appreciate you responding, being so responsive to my concerns. I think the thing is that, you know, this is, you're, you know, standing there or in a car, and you're at a, you're at a full stop, which I'm going to just say that that's not always the case, is that it's, there's a lot of non-compliance there. It's a yield sign sometimes, and sometimes it's a rolling stop, and other times it's not, you know, slowing down at all. So there's that part. And then the part about, you know, before and after school, there's increased traffic for sure, during events, during any closures of any main thoroughfares, Downer Lake now. It's also an alternate route for the county buses, which are quite massive. So that, that's one part. The other part is, again, that unpredictability of where are pedestrians crossing? There are many options, but none of them are all that predictable as you're crossing Shorewood. So, yeah, and I guess the last thing was that there is a nice example on Frederick and Kensington, where it's another sort of offset intersection. It's designed much, you know, it has much more design to it. It's got, it's a four-way stop, and it has three pedestrian crossings. And it's just, again, there's much more clarity as to what's, what needs to happen. And I think my concern with having that parking there, it is technically in the intersection. There is a, it's between two walkways, if you're going to call it that, or two pedestrian ramps. So it's just a matter of its visibility, but it's also like a congestion issue, and just, you know, a fact that, you know, recognizing that it's an intersection. So, yeah, those are my thoughts on that. But I absolutely appreciate that stop line. I think, again, any visual cue is going to be helpful, I think, so.
But if I ask you a question about connecting with your neighbors, specifically at 3912, or 3839, or 3833, which would be, you know, the old Guzen household, the McCauley household, and the one on the corner. Have you talked to them about taking away parking in front of their houses at all, or no?
Well, it's, it would just be on, there's, you know, on that east side of Prospect. So in my mind, it's one spot that's sort of hanging out there. But yeah, no, that's, that is a question I have not. But yeah, no, that's that, that is a question I have not, um, there is. Yeah, it would, that would be, that would be a question as to, you know, is that. Uh, there's that, there's two addresses there, is that really a needed spot? So yeah, that that is a concern that I don't, I'm not sure.
Thank you, Shayna, um, appreciate your time, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Uh, before I make a motion, any more thoughts or comments?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I've I've spent. What is probably. Days of my life in that intersection, um, between playing. When I was growing up and the, you know, in that intersection. Um, there was never really been a problem, I certainly understand the concern. You know, I. Wish the applicant had connected with the neighbors. Um, about removing parking in front of their home or requesting that we remove parking in front of their home. Um, while there's certainly plenty of parking. Uh, around, it's still in front of their home. Um, and, you know, they purchased that home with the expectation that there would be parking there, and if there's not. We should have a conversation with them about that, I think, at least before moving ahead. Um, with that said, I would not favor taking it all the way up to the driveway on the north, I just. There's plenty of space there. Um, you know, people. I completely agree with the applicant. People, like they do in every intersection in the village, use and abuse that stop sign. Um, but that's, you know, I think that there's plenty of space. To get through and there's plenty of visuals, um, but. For now, um. You know, because we haven't talked to any of the neighbors, we haven't had that conversation. You know, I'm gonna be a no, um, but if the, you know, if the applicant comes back and says, I talked to the neighbors and. We're all in agreement, and this is a problem, um, then, you know, I could very easily switch my vote.
I mean, I'll be a yes, I I think, um, you know, it's a weird intersection. I think it's reasonable to. Do whatever we can to have more visibility and make it easier for drivers to see. Uh, pedestrians or people on bikes, um, so I think since there's plenty of parking there and. Parking that's in front of your house, that's still village public property, it's not necessarily. Uh, the homeowner's parking space, I think it's okay to, um. Make a no parking zone to increase the safety of that intersection for. Uh, really for all users, for anybody driving through the intersection or or walking or biking.
Now Bart, do you recommend the motion with the pack?
The the motion in the packet would be for staff's recommendation, correct, so.
Okay, so I would, um. You know, I I would side with trustee Kudo on this, I I really have a hard time going against staff recommendations for our our village procedures. Um, we have rules and procedures in place, and, you know, while, you know. While I totally can empathize with with uh Shayna in, uh, you know, and having, you know, these kind of a. Sort of a rough traffic situation next to our house, uh, we also have a lot of these procedures in place, and we, you know, try to stick to them as best as we can. And if we don't, then, you know, there's. There's there's chaos in the community when it comes to parking, um, so. I would like to make motion, I move to recommend the village board consider approval of a request for no parking on North Prospect Avenue within the intersection. Of East Shore Boulevard as discussed, as discussed.
The, that's as.
Second.
That's as discussed, the village's recommendation?
The intention of that was to be as discussed within the memo, and in the memo, I I mentioned the two fifteen-foot zones, not up to the driveway. And I can clarify that when it goes to the board, so just for reference, this does go to the board for formal approval, so I can clarify that within that, but my understanding of. Trustee Ursink's recommendation is to follow staff recommendation.
And that would be the second graphic with the X's and the.
Correct.
Yep, okay, that's, that's. That's the direction I'd like to go.
Okay, I'm getting a vote.
We have a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
So motion passes two to one.
And again, I. I would probably be a yes had we had contact with the neighbors.
I think, though, are you sure that you, the the nay is, because you're agreeing, you're agreeing with what we're the motion, but you're.
No, my, I'm saying nay on top, because we haven't talked to the neighbors about.
Okay.
There's been no outreach to the neighborhood about taking parking spots away.
Okay.
If there was outreach and they came back and said, yep, we're for it as well, I would be a yes.
Okay. You know, I I'd lean in that direction too, if it if it came, but at the, but but.
Yeah, I get it.
Let's, you know, from, you know, the motion passes two, one, so. We will see it at a future village board meeting.
Correct, I I will send a letter to the neighborhood just to make them aware of the request and 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 the meeting in September, so. Hopefully by that point, we do have some feedback from them to, when the board considers it.
Great, if it comes back and the everyone's for it, then I'll happily vote for it.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Shayna. Uh, our second agenda item tonight is to review and possibly recommend uh an update to policy. Number forty-three Traffic and Parking Regulation Request Program. Um, Bart?
Thank you, Chair Ursink, so once again, um, this is coming to us um as a matter of clarification from staff, so. Since we installed the traffic calming demonstration activities um over the past, you know, three or four months. We have seen an uptick in people requesting traffic calming, and some some members of the community have pointed to our current policy. Which inadvertently does include mention of traffic calming in several locations. Despite the fact that later on in the policy, it says that traffic calming would not be considered as part of this program. So just proactively, staff would like to um clean up the intention of of this program to be related to traffic um parking regulations and. Um, uh. Let me blank it down, um, and um stop signs, yield signs, things of that nature, just because traffic calming um is quite. E- engineering-intensive, cost-intensive, um, more public involvement in terms of getting it. The bike plan that we recently adopted does recommend adopting a separate program for traffic calming. Um, the city of Milwaukee, City of Wauwataosa have those programs, and so. The intention of this would be to clarify that this pro- program is not for traffic calming by removing traffic calming in the places that it inadvertently had been inserted. Um, I'll take full ownership on that, I had drafted it, I did not uh intend um for the confusion, so. Staff are just looking to clean this policy up in anticipation of perhaps developing a a program for traffic calming. Um, that might be recommended um after the September meeting, um, once the demonstration activity report is finalized, so. We're we're just here proactively, since I had the time on the agenda to to bring this matter to your attention. We did receive a request for traffic calming um within the recent summer months, and and they pointed out the the, you know, uh. The ambiguity here, so, once again, we're just looking to clean up um how we've treated these in the past.
Trustees?
Yeah, I mean, I I think it makes sense, um, as long as we do get to the policy recommendation to to develop a policy on this that's in the uh. Bike and pedestrian plan, but I think it. Good recommendation just for clarity for the community and for staff as well.
Uh, I'd love to see the the separation, uh, also, um, traffic calming. My only question is, um, by keeping it traffic controlled, does that still leave a little bit of that ambiguity? Do you think people would still be slightly confused with the wording of that?
I I hope the definitions um within the policy would would make it clear, um. Definitely, the the draft that I've shared here would make it clear for staff in terms of. Being able to respond to people, um, so I I don't think.
Okay.
I think the draft would would definitely help staff respond more effectively to to response to requests.
Fantastic, okay. Uh, if there's no further comment, I'm happy to make a motion. So I move to recommend the village board consider an update to policy number forty-three Traffic and Parking Regulation Request Program as presented, discussed. Uh, without any edits.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's uh three, zero. And that is recommended to the full board. Thank you, uh, entertain a uh.
Second.
So moved. The meeting is adjourned at uh six thirty-nine PM. Thank you, Bart.
Thank you.
Bart, I have a question.
Sure.
All right, it is six forty-seven, I am calling um. The meeting, meeting of the committee of the whole to order. Um. All trustees and our village president are present with the exception of trustee Arndropper, who is excused. As I understand it, we have one item of business on the agenda tonight, uh, that is uh several items relating to the streetlight charge. Uh, Rebecca, do we have any kind of presentation on those three items or just discussion?
Uh, just discussion, I don't have any other additional, there's actually three separate items, but all of them were able to be covered within the scope of one memo. Because some of them interrelate. So within your packet is a memo that covers. Um, number one, consider utilization of TID one extends, extension funds to offset the streetlight charge. Number two, consider utilization of the parking utility fund balance to offset the streetlight charge. And number three, consider utilization of the vehicle registration fee to cover part of the streetlight costs. This memo has been put together, um. By the finance um department and David Hickey, um, who's joins us here this evening. So you may want to move up to the front row, because if there are questions with regards to the memo, you can step forward to the microphone to address those. And um, for purposes of this evening, we can move forward with A. Which is consider utilization of TID one extension funds to offset the streetlight charge.
Okay, so on item A, uh, is there anyone who wants to begin the discussion? Uh, trustee Silkbrand?
I'll start, I had learned about this, the possibility of using. Well, I think we all knew that when we approved the TID extension. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, that we could use twenty-five percent of the funds. To improve housing, not necessarily for a affordable housing, but I don't want to misspeak it, I may not be. Elucidating that completely correctly, but we knew that twenty-five percent would be available. And uh, someone I had spoken with at the Wisconsin League. Had indicated that he thought perhaps streetlights would be included. Um, upon. Speaking with Nathan, our village attorney. It appears that he thinks he could defend lead service lines, but not. A streetlight charge if we would be challenged. I guess I wonder. If it's our money and we're taking it from our own. Residents. Who would challenge us? I mean, that's one question, I mean, of course, we want to do something legal, but. If it's not specifically spelled out and there is some gray area, if we decided to do it. What difference would it make? You see what I'm saying? Who who would come after us? Would it be the State Department of Revenue? Would someone sue us? What what are we afraid of? What happened?
I don't know, that's a.
A lot of hypothetical.
Yes.
And and I guess my question would be, you know, when I was reading a legal opinion, and maybe, I don't know if anybody in the room can answer this. There was reference to a Department of Revenue opinion, opinion. Um, I don't know that it was included with the the. The past packets materials, and I'm curious as to what that opinion was, was it directly on point? With respect to streetlights, uh, was it, was it, was there any gray area within that opinion, that Department of Revenue opinion? I don't know if you happen to know or not, but.
It's my understanding that the um, the village attorney did speak to the Department of Revenue. Um, in past communication with Department of Revenue and the TID extension funds. That, um. You know, the statute is relatively simple, um, it says seventy-five percent must be used for affordable housing. And that other remaining twenty-five percent to improve the housing stock. And when I press them on who um. Determines that, you know, they reference that we should be consulting with our municipal attorney.
I kind of get the feeling there's not a lot of precedent here.
Correct.
No case law.
I don't think it's a well-defined term, which is why we're running into some ambiguities here.
Correct.
But it sounds as if the village attorney is reluctant to say that. He views this as related to uh improving the housing stock. That's, that's the impression I got from the, from the legal memo, but.
And he believes lead service lateral replacement would, it would be applicable, but not. Streetlight.
That, I I agree with your your assessment, that's, that's how I read it as well.
I mean, the que- the question is how. One, do we want to push this, two, do we want, you know. We want to take the rec- and I mean, obviously, the, you know, the village attorney is gonna do his level best, make sure that. Paint inside, color inside the lines as much as humanly possible, there is some ambiguity. I'm comfortable. But, you know.
I guess, trustee Ursink?
Yeah, I I, you know, I think it's, you know, at this point, it's a horse of peace, I I think we're gonna have to do both. Uh, the lead lateral issue in Shorewood is a real problem, um, you know, it's something that, you know, it. We have lead in our water, and uh, no amount of lead in the water is safe, uh, no matter what anybody says. And I would say that that is probably the most pressing sort of issue at this moment. Um, and with, you know, all the sort of, you know. Political ramifications or the political environment of what's going on and where we're at with this. I do think that we should be forward-thinking about where that money is coming from. Um, the streetlights are done, they're in place. Um, we might need to turn them down.
Not in my neighborhood.
They will be. Yes, uh, anyways.
Paul.
You know, but but I think, I think the lead, I I think that we could go either way with this, but the lead issue is is a very real issue. And um, it's something that that we haven't necessarily paid for yet, and we have to figure out where those funds are gonna come from eventually as well, so. Well, I think in the short term, it would look great to put this money towards street lighting, it would help our community. Within this first year, um, I think overall, this money might be better spent uh going towards the lateral, lead laterals, because. It's a, that's a very real, real issue that we have here.
Yeah, from from my perspective here, I mean, I'm I'm reluctant to um, to go against our village attorney's opinion, I I'm I'm conservative in 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 that way. And I agree with you, trustee Ursink, maybe this, you know, given the fact that there's risk in applying it towards streetlights. And we need to address the lead service laterals, maybe that's where this money is better spent, I would certainly support that, but I am a little bit reluctant to um. To contradict our our attorney's opinion.
I I'd agree on that as well, having. Reviewed his memo and looking, looking at the statute myself, I think. I think it's pretty clear that um. The TID one extension funds can't be used for lighting, but they could be used for lead laterals, and I, you know. That came up before I I voted against it, but I think. In the context of this budget going forward, I I'd be willing to look at using. Some of those TID extension funds for the lead laterals, especially since the uh, the proposal for the um. New housing in on the Oakland Avenue parking lot, if that goes forward. Uh, the subsidy that the developer would be requesting is quite a bit lower than um. They were first discussing when we were first taking the proposals in the RFP, so. I'm open to using um, some of those TID extension funds to. To offset some of the other costs we're facing as a village, probably not the streetlights, though.
Trustee Silkbrand?
Um, a question, and I don't know if this is a problem with the agenda. We're typically using double-digit, like twenty percent. Water rate increases, proposed, not approved yet, to pay for lead service laterals. Is there some lead service? Line work coming in twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six? Since where a rate case hasn't been approved, that we could use. Five hundred thousand, take it from the TID extension, the twenty-five percent, and apply it to the lead service lines.
It's a, it's a good question, one of the things, and this is, we included this. In passable motions, is that the board could direct us to evaluate the use of those TID one extension funds. Um, and how that would play into either. Projects that are currently underway or for twenty twenty-six. Um, but it, that is something that we'd like, I would want some more time to review in greater detail. But if the board would like to explore that opportunity, we'd, that's some feedback we would want to hear from you. Thank you.
I could support that, I could support using it for for this.
Looks like we have some consents, I've been seeing a lot of nodding in the room, so it's looking like we have some consensus to. Uh, utilize that twenty-five, twenty-five percent for uh, for lead service lines. I don't know if we need a motion here, or. Just if it's just general direction?
I'm fine taking general direction. With that.
Okay.
Does that then conclude item one?
Any other, any other? I don't have anything else.
Okay.
Okay, now, the second item uh on the agenda for the committee of the whole. Is a utilization of the parking utility fund balance to offset some of the streetlight charge. Anyone want to kick off the discussion?
I'll start on this one, because I, I requested that we consider this, um. You know, there's. Apparently three hundred thousand available in the um parking utility fund, and. Last year when we were doing the budget, I wanted to use some of that to. Offset the um property tax increase, um, that didn't go forward, and. Now that we're kind of getting towards budget season again, it's something else I'd like. I'd like us to consider when we're, when we're. Doing the budget, as far as I, as I understand, those funds are. Uh, you know, not so restricted as some of the other funds we have, and. You know, it would, I think, be a good chunk of change just to spend that money on the. Uh, streetlights right now and. And we are, we have less of a need as a village for a parking utility now that we're allowing more on-street parking. We may be getting rid of a parking lot. So there's just less need for the expense of maintaining, resurfacing those parking lots. And I think it'd be a good way to just offset some of these costs of the streetlight charge that are, you know, we have so many new costs now. We raised property taxes quite a bit. Last year, we had the new fees. There's bigger things in the economy going on with tariffs and inflation and everything. So, you know, to the extent we can use some one-time funds to offset some of these costs we're facing right now, I'm in favor of that.
Any other trustees? Trustee Stoker, Rand.
One thing that this has brought to mind with this is what will happen with the streetlight funding as it is now, as we approved last fall? I'm wondering as, as the new lights are installed and our electric bill goes down with all the LED lights, we obviously still have the bonds to pay off. But I'm wondering how difficult it would be to see a projection from finance that would show the, the accounts for the street lighting fund from 2025 to 2035. Like, can we tell people it's high now, but we have to pay our interest on our bonds after, you know, for 20 years? But once we get through the big initial cost and our utility, because I'm guessing the utility light, the electric bill will also come out of this, right? Well, can we tell people the fee you see now is likely to go down a little, a lot, or not at all? Or what can we tell them?
Well, I'd say the electric costs are a small part of what the streetlight costs are. Most of the cost involved with that is going to be the capital infrastructure, which is paid through via the debt service. So I would say that 90% of that is the debt, is going to be related to the capital costs. 80 to 90%.
And so by the, so the last year of install is 2029. What will it look like in 2030 when we're only paying debt and maintenance on brand-new streetlights with LED lights?
I can, I can do a
I think that would be helpful.
It goes around 40,000 a year in electricity savings, but defer to the expert.
Right, right now, we're at 900,000 is our estimate with debt service and maintenance, electricity, et cetera.
For the years during the construction, right? You don't expect that.
No, that's per year.
But after, after, in 2030, when they're all installed and they're all
That will continue, right? Less any savings in electricity. So like, most of the costs are debt service, right? So.
Trustees, I think you were.
Yes, so we do have on September 30, a special public works meeting to discuss street lighting charges and how we wanted, you know, we're looking at the appeals. Am I correct? September 3rd? I don't want him to speak September 3rd, right? September 3rd, we're going to be looking, our public works committee is going to be looking at all the appeals for street lighting. And we're going to be making a recommendation on how to move forward after that. I would
I just got a timeout for one second. So the special public works committee meeting is for purposes of reviewing the appeals. Should there be a discussion with regards to the policy that takes place at village board? That won't be within the purview of the committee that evening? And the reason being is because you are essentially functioning in the same capacity as a body similar to the Board of Appeals, where you need to evaluate the information in front of you based upon how it was processed under the rules at that time.
Yeah.
But I do believe that seeing the appeals that come forward to you will perhaps inform a discussion at the village board level to take a look at how this, you know, first year of implementation has been.
So the public works, just to be clear, public works committee is going to review the appeals. And then we will not discuss, discuss those basically. We will not make any recommendation until we get to the village board. And then under a certain agenda item, as public works chair, I'll be engaged in that? Or will we just talk about that as a group? And then from our experience, from looking at those appeals, we will share our, what we've, I guess, I guess, what's the point of just us looking at it and then going to a full board without a recommendation?
The purpose of your group, the public works committee hearing the appeals, is that you're not, you're not being asked to respond to them as a whole. You're being asked to respond to each appeal on its, its own merits and to provide a response to that appeal. Once you do that, you will have done your duty within the scope of the appeals process. Then, following that September 3rd meeting, should you choose as the chair of public works to come forward to the board and say, I'd request that this item be placed on a future item of consideration, either to be discussed at the public works committee, or maybe you want to do committee of the whole. However, the group would decide.
Got you.
Then that would be a next step, but that should take place within the realm of the policy group and in conjunction with the board.
Okay, good. So just so that's clear for us in the public, to, to wrap around my initial comment is, I think before I'd be, before I'd, you know, like to make any sort of, you know, potential steps to offset costs with any of the parking utility balance, I would like to see sort of what that conversation, how that conversation goes at the full board and how we decide to rearrange maybe that funding mechanism for the street lighting charge. After I see that, then I think I could be a little bit more, I'd be more open to how to offset some of the new funds or the funds that are redistributed. So kind of where I stand, if that makes sense.
It makes sense and I agree. So I'd, I'd like to, you know, see where we are. I could blow a major hole in that budget.
That seems to make sense to, it makes sense to me. That approach makes sense to me as well.
Okay.
And just before, before we go on, President McCaig, I know you're, I know you're online and I have not been as diligent in looking up as I should have been. So just let me know or either chime in or raise your hand if, if, if you want to, want to join the discussion. I apologize. I just haven't, I haven't, I haven't been looking up, so.
It's tough. It's difficult. I will definitely let you know if I have something to say.
Sounds, sounds good. Trustee Stoker, Rand.
So then we're, is there a consensus that we want to continue to consider using the parking utility fund balance? We're not taking it off the list as a possibility, correct?
I'm not.
With the streetlight charge.
That makes sense to me, to, to see where we are after the, the meeting on the 3rd and then have that discussion because I'm certainly open to it too, but I'd like a little bit more information post, post September 3rd, so.
Does that include item, include item number two?
Any, any further discussion on item number two? All right. So I think we're concluded on item number two with the last agenda item for the committee of the whole. And I'm going to kick it over to you, trustee McGovern, in a second. Utilization of vehicle registration fee to reduce streetlight costs.
Yeah, so I requested to bring this to the board because the vehicle registration fee can be used for transportation and transportation infrastructure. To me, streetlights fit that. I know the, the village attorney, that he would need a little more, need to do a little more research on that, but seems to me that the streetlight is part of the street. It's actually called a streetlight, not to get too cute, but it seems like it would fit. It seems like it fits the definition. And I was thinking more of this in future years, not so much to come back to ask for an increase in that again, since we just added it. But I'm, I'm thinking more in future years, is there an opportunity? When some of the other items that it's going towards now are paid off, is there an opportunity to direct some of that maybe further out? And that's, that's more of a question for our finance staff because I, I'm not clear exactly on where, where all that money is dedicated for coming up. But I just wanted to kind of start that discussion in the context of the budget coming up and in future years.
Yeah, and I, I, I agree with that general sentiment. I mean, the fee is, the fee is so new now, I don't think that I would be in favor of raising it at this point.
Yeah.
But perhaps it's something that we could bring up in a future budget cycle and, and figure out if it makes sense then. Trustee Stoker, Rand.
It's sort of, it brings up the issue of transparency with these charges. To me, it seems, you know, I'm eager to see how finance presents this in terms of income and expenses when the money comes in. Where does it come in? We can see how many vehicles have been paying a wheel tax in the village. Obviously, it says your plates come due. And also then where is the money going? So I look forward to seeing that from finance. How much money came in from the wheel tax in the first six months of the year? And then how do we plan to use it in, beginning in 2026? Or are we, are we already tapping into those funds? Are they segregated? That's what I think we need to have.
I can reply in part to that. First, we should clarify that the fee did not go into effect as of January 1. It was delayed at the DMV, went into effect, I believe, in March. That being said, I, I know that we just concluded the, some, reviewing some numbers with the parking utility for purposes of the quarter two report. And that number tracking to date from the DMV was an estimated 78,000. And we received those fees monthly. Am I correct, David? By deposit or ACH directly from the DMV. So the number of 340, 34,000 in revenue, that was estimated based upon the number of license, licenses that the DOT had and registrations on file for Shorewood at the time we were discussing the fee. We will see how that reconciles at the end of the first year of that implementation. And specifically with regard, and David, you can jump in if this is incorrect, but those fees are directly offsetting payments for road improvements that are happening and we are paying for through purposes of debt service.
So those funds are commingled.
They're going to, the revenue is
It's just going
Specific revenue. And so you know exactly what that is. Pay for debt service.
When you bond, you specifically bond for an amount related to road improvements. And so that is being used to help pay for those.
And so that's, we can specifically know that that amount, when we see our second quarter financial report in September, we'll get a full accounting of the money we've had from the wheel tax. And then we'll just know that it's all gone. It's earmarked for
Budgeted for.
Budgeted for
So that's
Debt service.
Correct, for road improvements.
It's all for debt service.
Is, is the bond, like, is Shorewood getting that bond kind of predicated on us having that dedicated vehicle registration fee to pay it off?
The bond is not predicated on the vehicle registration fee. You as a village can choose to fund that in a various number of ways. If you'll, if you'll recall, in the last two years, we've had a sign, we've been bonding every year for purposes of road improvements. And so that was one of the mechanisms to generate revenue to help offset those payments moving forward for purposes of those bonds. But the bonds are specifically designated for roadway improvements. As no differently than we would specifically designate for water and sewer improvements.
We have consensus on direction for this, for this item?
I definitely am not in favor of trying to increase it anymore in the foreseeable future. If it's, if it's difficult, again, if we're afraid that we will somehow be challenged for using those funds, I guess I would, if, if the village attorney says he needs more time to investigate it, I think it's worth looking into just because the streetlight charge has been so onerous for so many people.
And I, I agree with that. I think that this is, again, something that I view as something that we might want to revisit in the future. But for right now, I would, I would hold, I would hold the line on these, on these fees. They're new. But maybe this is a lever we can pull at some point in the future, should we need to.
Good.
Is that the consensus of the group? Okay.
So, so Attorney Bayer will research it further and see if it's possible to use that for streetlights in '25 or '26?
What I heard was that there was not a desire to increase the fee as of right now and that in a future budget year, not including the one that we'll be working on in 2025 for purposes of 2026, you may entertain looking at increasing that fee in the future.
No, I would, I think what I meant was, I want Attorney Bayer to consider looking at whether or not he could defend the, using vehicle registration fee income to offset the streetlight charge in 2026 for this coming budget.
My apologies. I thought he already provided an opinion on that.
It, it said he wasn't, it said he would need to do a little more research.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Sorry, I can't.
So I would prefer that he does do a little more research because I think we still need that on the table for the 2026 budget. Please.
Any thoughts on that? My, my, my feeling was to push it off a year, give us another year here. But certainly want to hear from the board on that.
I mean, that's an issue that finance up to finance avenues or, or different revenue pieces they want to discuss.
Well, if you wanted us to build a budget forecasting an increase in that for purposes of streetlights, which I don't know if it can be or not used for streetlights. Initially, his was no, but he reserved the right to, to research it further. Then we would build it with that. I'd prefer not to go through the exercise of building it into something, just having for you to cut it out and then take revenue from some other area.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if, if we're kind of thinking we don't want to do that in 2026, then we probably shouldn't have him, you know, we probably shouldn't spend the money on having him research it further at this point, would be my position.
I mean, my thought was to have it queued up for next year. That was, that was where, that was where my head was.
For the '27 budget?
Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
I guess I don't know how deep the hole is going to be for 2020, but I'd like the flexibility.
I'm open to being flexible. I'm, I'm with Kathy. I think just, just not closing off any channels because you're right, we don't know what that '20s, '26 budget is going to look like. And I think we're going to probably have similar sort of, we'll be in a similar position though, as we were last year. And every opportunity, every sort of mechanism we have to, to, you know, bring down those costs, I'm open to listening to. So I'd hate to take it off the table for this year.
Just not, not an increase in the wheel tax.
Right.
Yeah, what about this? We, we build the budget envisioning a 0% increase in the vehicle registration fee. We received the legal opinion with regards to whether he believes they can be used for streetlights. But it's not built into the, it's not, any increase in fees is not built into the budget. Because that's a point I kind of want to clarify.
No, I, yeah, I mean, I think that's where we're at.
Okay.
I think the majority of us are saying, we're not interested in increasing the wheel tax, the wheel fees at this point. Obviously, we're waiting for an opinion. If we get an opinion that says otherwise, we would probably take a look at that for '27.
You could entertain it, you could not.
Yeah, but as far as having it on the table or off the table, I've never been wildly comfortable with doing finance through Cow. There's a finance committee, there's a finance chair. If the finance chair wants to have as many options as possible so that she can put together the budget along with staff and present us with as many options as possible, that's perfectly fine with me.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. I can get on board with that.
I have the direction I need. David, do you?
Right, I think that covers all of our
Oh, President McCaig, did you have your hand up?
Oh.
I did, but I think everything's been covered. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, President McCaig.
That's okay.
If there's no other discussion, then we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second.
Motion, motion to adjourn, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, five, six to zero.
All right, I'm calling us to order. It is 7:31. I'm calling this meeting of the Shorewood Village Board to order. All trustees are present with the exception of trustee Arndorfer, who is excused. I believe the first order of businesses, has this, has this meeting been noticed in accordance with Wisconsin state law?
The meeting has been properly noticed and posted according to law.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a special order of business entitled, "In the Beginning, Mud"
Mud Provoked Village and Corporation" by the Shorewood Historical Society. Karen to Karen to Hartog.
Might I call three of us to the house?
Yes, please.
I'm Karen T. Hartog and 4537 North Sheffield. 4537 North Sheffield. Got it, I can hear it. And I'm here with two other members from the Historical Society.
My name is Christine Mueller. I live at 2320 East Menlo Boulevard. And have met you when you were campaigning.
Good evening, I'm Alex Vagelatus. I live at 4500 North Bartlett Avenue.
Welcome.
Well, good evening, and thank you for inviting us to to bring our our program to you. This is kind of a tag team, so just give us a little bit of leeway here trying to get back and forth to the mic. And Wes, you've heard this before, so if you're distracted to something else, we won't be insulted. But we hope that the rest of you will will enjoy hearing about what it was like here in the beginning. This is our 125th anniversary and that name on the screen is unpronounceable, but that stands for 125th anniversary. And as we thought about ways to celebrate it, one of the things we kept coming back to is we really know where we we need to know where we started. And this presentation tonight is an attempt to spread that word and that story. So in the beginning, in 1900, President William McKinley presided over 45 states and five territories. In less than a year, he would be dead and replaced by Theodore Roosevelt. Across the country, people were listening to Souza marches and ragtime, and they were reading Peter Pan, Anne of Green Gables, and Call of the Wild. The city of Milwaukee was growing rapidly due to new industries and immigration. By 1890, 86% of Milwaukee's population was composed of residents born outside of the United States and their children. At the time, Milwaukee was known as the most foreign city in America. Milwaukee was growing rapidly, and there was a housing shortage. Improvements in transportation made it possible for middle class and professional people to consider moving out of the city, enjoy a single family home and a yard, and commute to the jobs in Milwaukee. Meanwhile, outside of the Milwaukee city limits, in a small corner of the town of Milwaukee, bordered by Milwaukee, Whitefish Bay, the Milwaukee River, and Lake Michigan, residents were tired of begging the town to do something about their muddy streets. It was time to take matters into their own hands, even though the area was populated with more farm animals than people. It was time to incorporate. Note that although there were probably many paths through the village in 1900, there were only five named muddy streets. In 1900, there was Oakland. There was Capitol, but it was called Lake Street. Lake Drive, which was called Whitefish Bay Toll Road. Downer, which was called Glen. And Edgewood, which was called Keef. We shall refer to them by their current names in order to avoid confusion.
A little pre 1900 history will help us understand that incorporation was a momentous decision. Before a white man came to our village, the areas were covered by sugar maple and white oak trees. Native Americans hunted and fished in the area and buried some of their dead in mounds near the river. The Sauk Trail, six, one of six Indian trails that diverse Milwaukee County, passed through the area. Its well beaten track started at Potawatomi Village, which stood at the present location of Northwater Street and East Wisconsin Avenue, and followed the Highland ridges along the lake north to Green Bay. About 200 years ago, 1832, Milwaukee County land east of the Milwaukee River was purchased from the Menominee Indians by the US government. The land was surveyed and divided into sections. Four of the sections met at the corner of Capitol and Oakland, thus forming the popular crossroads. Land speculators quickly moved in to buy large chunks of the property. They were followed by farmers who cut the trees and attempted to plow the heavy clay soil. The first permanent residents were Thomas and Jane Bear and their children. Thomas was from Ireland, Jane was born in New York. They arrived in 1841 and bought 40 acres just east of the river and north of Capitol Drive. They farmed, grew apples, and sold part of their land to the Lakeshore Railway that began service in the area in 1873. Other farmers and a few small businesses followed the Bears. On the lakefront property that was owned by the Vogels, they raised horses for riding and to pull wagons for their tannery for the Fister and Vogel Tannery. Sawmills and grist mills were located on the Milwaukee River from 1886 to 1909. The Milwaukee Cement Company ran mills on both sides of the river, processing riverstone into high grade cement. And now for something different. A skunk farm, which produced pelts, was located at Marion and Lake Drive. A building on the corner of Capitol and Lake Drive, which of course, as Karen pointed out a few moments ago, was called the White Fish Bay Toll Road, was used to manufacture a blasting powder called Dooline. It was supposed to explode only on percussion, but on Thanksgiving Day in 1872, think about this one. Barrels of powder replaced close to the stove to keep them from freezing. What could possibly go wrong? They ignited, exploded, and four men were killed in causing Shorewood's only fatal industrial accident. Situated amongst the farms were subdivisions planted as early as 1887. However, in 1900, weather worn streetposts and faded for sale signs gave little evidence of the village that was to come. Mineral Springs Park, a fairly sedate place for Milwaukee visitors to spend a Sunday afternoon, was in the southwest corner of the area. And of course, we have to talk about taverns because Pete Mead and Thomas Adler opened taverns across from that park, from the Mineral Springs Park on Oakland Avenue. On the lake side of the village, a toll road had been constructed to meet the transportation needs of wealthy Milwaukeeans who had summer cottages along what would eventually be called the Gold Coast. They also visited the Milwaukee Country Club, just down the street from where I moved five years ago, which opened in 1895 on the bluff of Lake Michigan. Visitors rode horses and tried the new sport of golf. The toll road continued north to the Pap's Beer Garden in Whitefish Bay. The country club moved to River Hills in 1911. People from Milwaukee who enjoyed the recreational opportunities in the area were demanding better transportation. In 1886, the Whitefish Bay Railway Company was organized to provide train service north into Whitefish Bay. Tracks entered the village at Downer and Angled Nook north and west along the current Maryland and Frederick. It was called the dummy line, probably because it consisted of one fully enclosed car, two open ones with benches. It was obviously not designed to handle winter weather. About 12 years later, 1898, the Milwaukee Electric Railway and Light Company extended its electric car line north on Oakland Avenue to Whitefish Bay.
Evening, and thank you for having us. You listen carefully, you may catch one or two early echoes of the work that you find public servants do today. There was little evidence of community life before 1900. Those running through the region on the dummy line saw only 30 buildings in the whole village. There were three taverns and one country club. There were no churches, no stores, and a two room school that had faded from red to pink. 1900 brought the promise of a little more activity to this otherwise sleepy village. An amusement park named Coney Island was bringing lots of rides, funhouse, music, and more to the southwest corner of the village, formerly occupied by Mineral Springs Park. However, fees for the new park would go to the town of Milwaukee. This did not sit well with our few residents. After a meeting at Pete Mead's Tavern on Oakland and Newton in March of 1900, community representatives filed an application with Milwaukee County to incorporate. After determining there were at least 300 residents in the proposed village, the county granted the request dependent on approval by local residents. There are only about 100 potential voters in the area. Women could not vote. On August 21, 1968 votes were cast, 45 for incorporation and 23 against. Wonder what the 23 were thinking? The village of East Milwaukee was born. Shortly thereafter, voters met again to fill 12 village positions. Everything from village president and trustees to inspector of the common school and inspector of fences. William McFarland, a 45 year old farm manager, was elected president. He and his wife Lillian lived in two still standing locations. 2004 East Kensington. Note the addition on the right side. And 4461 North Prospect. Prospect Home was later occupied by longtime village president William Hubbard and his wife May. It became known as the White House because two village presidents had lived there. Although McFarland served only one year as president, the same dozen or so names appear on lists for trustees and commissioners for multiple years. They just switched positions. Along with our saloon keeper, Pete Mead, three others stand out for their longevity. Charles Dommer, who was village treasurer and trustee, was born in Germany, immigrated to Wisconsin in 1882. He and his wife Lena had a son, Gustav. They lived on a farm at Oakland and Newton. Both the house and the barn still stand, were occupied by Charles and Lena's offspring for many years. John Harkins and his wife Ida lived with their two children at 1912 East Kensington. Along with village duties, John played a major role in organizing the first Sunday School in the village. This map highlights the homes that were built in 1900 or earlier that are still standing today. Note that many of them were close to Edgewood. The homes further north were primarily farm homes. The first few years were no doubt very difficult for the village board principally because they had big ideas, no money. But they had some big ideas. The those amusement park fees were not as large as anticipated, however. After visiting banks, the trustees secured a loan for $300 from the Germania American Bank. All seven board members had to co-sign. Early ordinances necessarily included little or no cost to the village. They required residents to report communicable disease outbreaks, and they banned fortune tell. Notable, I wonder if they still are. I have no idea. Notably, they approved a $25 expenditure to start a library, which was three shelves in a storefront. There were endless arguments about repairing or replacing wardwoks. The two sides in the arguments were known as the progressives and the mutters, which says a lot about the problem. Thank you.
Well, Alex just told you about who was who the men were that were running the village. Meanwhile, back at the little houses that they were living in, either farmhouses or cottages, Lillian McFarland, Lena Dommer, and Ida Harkins, and many other women who lived here in 1900 were working hard to make a comfortable home for their families. I would not have been a good candidate for this job. I'm not sure any of you ladies would have enjoyed this. The women were dressed in corsets, blouses, and long sleeves and skirts to the floor. You got to work in this. And with the humidity, who knows how well you survive? They probably used ice boxes to preserve their food and wood burning stoves for cooking. Indoor plumbing would have been a luxury. They may or may not have had electricity. More they most likely had a garden to maintain and preserve their fruits and vegetables by canning them. So far, this sounds like fun. Then they were raising children who were susceptible to measles, mumps, chicken pox, whooping cough, dipsiria, scarlet fever, and many more unpleasant diseases. They may have also had responsibility for farm animals, probably chickens. So far, this sounds really glamorous. Their garbage had to be burned or buried, and guess who got that job? Water was pumped from a well or a spring. Chopping may have involved leaving your home in a boat because the area flooded. And then taking a streetcar into Milwaukee. Needless to say, they had scrubbed a lot of mud from the hems of these long skirts. They were also forming social security, social community, making friends and with neighbors who spoke English with an accent and represented many different nationalities and customs. It's hard for us to imagine how physically hard these women had to work. But they apparently are were ready to make the best of the opportunity to provide a safe, comfortable home for their family. Happily for them, within 20 years, electricity and gas and electric stoves, indoor plumbing would be available. 20 years. Sorry, I sound bitter.
I think Christine would have enjoyed the early 20th century very much. By 1910, secured loans, fees, and payments from the Milwaukee Electric Railway and Light Company, replacing streetcar rails in the roads. Lot to get in there. These fees allowed trustees to start constructing concrete sidewalks and roads. They also decided to link to the city of Milwaukee sewage and water system, which was far less expensive than building the service from scratch. Milwaukee's water had a good reputation. It was free of typhoid. In addition, the Board of Trustees resolved to secure and erect at least 30 street lamps in 1904. They ordered the first wooden street signs in 1909. They authorized the laying of the first gas mains in 1911. They first discussed a means of garbage collection in 1913. They contracted with the telephone company to install an automatic two party line in the village hall in 1913. They started ash collection by the street department in 1915. Enough visible progress was made in the first decade to encourage more people to make the move east Milwaukee. A new four room school had been constructed on Murray Avenue in 1908. The old pink school now served as the village hall. East Milwaukee grew in a few years from a population of 345 in 1900, 1600 in 1917. There were 470 families. Potential residents were followed by carpenters, bricklayers, people selling everything from building supplies to groceries. It was a chaotic assortment of homes and businesses. Random development is illustrated by pictures taken in 1912. The tracks. The tracks are the remains of the old dummy line and their path, which would shortly become Maryland Avenue. Note the small building that has a cross on the top. On the right is the small building, which was the original St. Robert Church, used from 1912 to 1915. A path in front of it was Lake Street, later to become Capitol Drive. The sign on the left advertises lots for sale. Three years after this picture was taken, St. Robert completed their first permanent building in the corner of Maryland and Capitol. And to the left, Atwater School. Eventually zoning regulation, eventually zoning regulations brought order and beauty to the neighborhoods. The village planted 6,000 new trees.
By 1917, the character of the village had changed dramatically since incorporation in 1900. Progress can be seen in the picture taken in about 1920 of Maryland Avenue. This is. At the bottom of the picture is their building Columbia Hospital. And if you look way up here on the top, you'll see Atwater School. So this picture was taken in probably 1919, 1920. So this picture was taken in probably nineteen nineteen, nineteen twenty. A tremendous amount had taken place in just a very short period of time, and we are very conscious of building our streets. The village name was changed to Shorewood, obviously, in nineteen seventeen to better reflect the character of the growing community. By nineteen thirty, just thirteen years after the name change, there was a population of thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-nine, which included three thousand eight hundred and thirty families. In conclusion, I'd like to tell you about one other family that was here for a long time. They're the Zarin family. Nicholas, who was born in Wisconsin in eighteen sixty-two, and his wife Adely. Their parents were German and Irish immigrants, which was so common with many of the families that were here. Nicholas and Adely had four daughters. Nicholas pictured here on the right was the police officer. But he started out as working on the trains. In nineteen hundred, he was hired as the first, what they called him, a marshal. But he was the first policeman. And the other man in this picture then became his boss eventually. And eventually, Mr. Zarin and his wife Adely opened their home on Lower Oakland to help feed the carnival workers who came for the summer. And she was famous for her pie, we understand. Nicholas became the first village marshal or policeman, and because he lived to a ripe old age, he was interviewed for news stories about early village history, which then appeared in the newspapers, which weren't around until nineteen twenty-three. Thanks to him, we have stories about rescuing lost cats, about volunteer fire department people carrying their own ladders, running to put out a fire, and even the noise of the racing motorcycles on the oval track, which was just north of the amusement park, south of the current high school. That was a motorcycle racing track for about two years. And it was an oval on which everybody went around with no brakes and went up the sides of this thing, this wood thing, and there were a lot of accidents. Members of the Zarin family still live in the village to this day. So out of the mud, a group of inspired, public-spirited men and women laid the foundation for a strong, resilient, and visually interesting community. We have dealt with and responded as a community to world wars and cold wars, a depression, epidemics, major floods, infrastructure problems, and much more. Good leaders involve citizens and probably more than a little bit of luck, have allowed us to maintain a village that reflects its history, a village we are all happy to call home. So happy anniversary to our village. In closing, I'd just like to tell you that a lot of the information for this comes from Mr. Zarin's stories, from a man named Charles Sheldon, who took most of the really good pictures we have of the early village. And his daughter is in all of the pictures that he took. So anyone where you see a little girl, that's a Sheldon picture. You can tell how old the picture is by how tall she is. And the third thing that I don't think many people are aware of is in the late nineteen thirties, there were community books written by people who were working for the Works Progress Administration, writers who were out of work, and we were lucky enough to have one of those books. This is our Bible, and it's a really good, well-written book about what happened here, even before nineteen hundred, about the geography and the people who were running the village and the schools. And it's all in here, and it's based on six big books that were written by the people who lived here in that early nineteen hundreds. So it's just a tremendous research for us. I just always want to make sure the people understand what a gift the WPA was to the Shorewood Historical Society and to the village. Do you may have any quick question you can answer for you?
Thank you. That was fantastic. I always love hearing the history of this community that, you know, sitting in this. And it's such an honor to sit here, to hear the history and to be at this desk. And sometimes we forget to put that in perspective. But do you feel like the mutters and the progressives are still having an issue to this day in Shorewood?
Oh, sure.
Did progressives turn into mutters eventually?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah. But tell you what, next time you're in the village center, down in the basement, we have two display cases, and I just found this poster a couple of weeks ago. It's with pictures that were given to us by a family named Mergan Pauler, and he was a plumber. And he bought land and built a house in nineteen twelve on Wood, just a block and a half down from the Metro Market. There's pictures down there of his house surrounded by water. Now, that, I always think of it as being the Edgewood ones that had the water. But there was, you know, this whole community was full of springs, and they just kept erupting, and people would get stuck in the water. So that was a real revelation to know that there was that much of a problem even that far north. But he stuck with it and did a lot of the plumbing for the village. The other company that should really be recognized is Dean Construction, which is Bob Dean's family, goes back to those of you who know Bob Dean. His family's company did almost all of the street construction, plumbing, underground work for the plumbing and sewer system. They've been around here for a long time with their name on what made this place finally work.
Yeah, well, it's amazing that just recently finishing all of our sewers in that southeast district that we finally come, you know, a long way from those springs of the past and everything being underwater to where we are today. So thank you so much, and yeah, it just reminds us what an honor it is to sit up here. Thank you.
Are you saying we have to call Bob about the lead? We call Bob about the lead pipes? Is that who we're calling? Yeah, Bob and Karen, and like, we'll get them in here and talk about the lead pipes?
No, they were Smith. They were all Smith.
Oh, okay, all right. Is that Jan Zarin, the?
Jan Jan's husband, yeah.
Wow, okay. So Amber.
The only one left with that Zarin name. There may be others around who are related to them but with the Zarin name.
Well, Karen, Christine, Alex, I just wanted to thank you, echo the comments. Thank you so much for this. It's a wonderful way to begin our meeting tonight. You know, it was fascinating when I heard it a few weeks ago, and it remains fascinating right now. I'm always amazed at the work, the really great work the Shorewood Historical Society does. And I will say, Whitefish Bay Toll Road, I think Lake Drive is a far better name, so.
Is that, you have a book?
Yeah.
Before you go, is that book, that transcribed somewhere? It's not.
And I also have one in my office that I found, so yeah.
Oh, very cool.
And I believe I have some of the initial books. There were six. Yeah, so I also found those in my office. They're incredible. Yeah, they're incredible.
Moving on to the next order of business, we have the consent agenda item. I am ready for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think to pull D is in Donna.
Any further discussion? Without further discussion, approving the consent agenda items with the exception of D, which has been pulled by trustee Stokerbrand. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Trustee Stokerbrand?
My concern about the Chris Cagle slow roll special event permit. I just wanted to make sure we, every year, we've asked for this. Typically, when they come, there's a lot of people writing on the sidewalks. And this year, besides the concern about that, I'm wondering if we'll have roads. So I'm assuming that they know the Lake Drive is under construction, and I don't know if they know if there will be, it's the end of August, right? Will there be any pavement on Lake Drive? Maybe they will all be on the sidewalk. That's my concern.
I will make sure to give that concern to the.
So if they can, the children only should be on the sidewalk. But if there's no road, maybe they want a different route.
Thank you. I'll let them know.
And with that, if, or Carol will communicate that to them, I'll move approval of the special event permit with that special notice from her.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Trustee Ursink, I see.
Yeah, I'd love to add, I think I try to add this every year, but that they remove the stickers that they put in the street. They put down arrows in the street to direct people towards the direction that the slow roll is going. And I just ask that they be mindful and clean up the stickers after they leave.
I'll be sure to give them that message as well.
Has that been an issue in the past?
I've seen them in my, in my area. And like, the Oak Leaf Trail as well. So I don't know if like, you know, usually like, if I'm going to the farmer's market, I see, you know, for days later, you know, as they get onto the Oak Leaf Trail. So I would make sure that they just be mindful of the stickers.
Yeah, that would be an important component of coming back next year for the privilege to do it again.
Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public hearing. We do not have a public hearing tonight. So I will move on to citizens to be heard. This is from anyone, any matters not on the agenda, anyone in the audience who would like to be heard. I would ask you to give your name, address, and limit your comments to two minutes. Is there anyone who would like to be heard, either in the room or online? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to our new business portion of the agenda. First item of new business is consider ordinance three zero seven three, in ordinance removing the yield signs controlling traffic on North Stoll Ave at East Lake Bluff Boulevard and replacing with stop signs. Do we have anyone presenting on this one?
I don't really have much, other than if you guys have read the memo about the stop sign changing a yield sign to a stop sign. That has no problem. But I will take questions.
Trustee, could I saw you, trustee Ursink?
I plan on making a motion, though.
Okay.
I plan on seconding this motion.
Okay. I move approval of ordinance thirty seventy-three, removing the yield signs controlling traffic on North Stoll Avenue at East Lake Bluff Boulevard and replacing with stop signs.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No further, is this a, is this a roll call? Okay, roll call vote.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
President McCag?
Aye.
Trustee Stokerbrand?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Motion carries six zero. Next, we will move on to item nine B. Consider resolution twenty twenty-five zero eight, a resolution regarding the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources twenty twenty-five urban forestry grant application.
I'll take any questions on that. The reason why it's to the board and not to me. Because we need to get the application in. We're not really sure what the money is, but we're somewhere.
Trustee Ursink?
I move approval resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, authorizing staff submission of a Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources urban forestry grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Would this be a one, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Is this a one-year?
Yeah, we do it every year.
Any further discussion from the floor? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, that's a roll call vote. I'm still rusty at this. We go to a roll call vote now?
Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
President McCag?
Aye.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
Trustee Stokerbrand?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Moving on, item nine C. Consider agreement with Tapco LLC for enhanced crosswalk equipment demonstration, product testing, and software evaluation.
Correct, so those two demonstrations will be at Capitol and Larkin, Olive and Wilson. Tapco actually reached out to us asking this.
Trustee Ursink?
I would love to make a motion. I move to approval of an agreement with Tapco LLC for equipment demonstration, product testing, and software evaluation of crosswalk enhancements at the intersection of East Capitol Drive and North Larkin Street and North Wilson Drive and East Olive.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Trustee Stokerbrand?
So there's going to be a software package?
Correct.
And that is good for ten years, is that what I?
Correct, at no cost.
At no cost. And so we'll have to train somebody, obviously?
Correct.
Who run it?
Correct.
But.
Which we already have a few of those light-up signs, crosswalks and things. Those also have to be programmed. All the light-up stop signs have to be programmed every year. Morris School Zone signs that are on Morris outside of the Intermeater School, those have to be programmed every year. So we already have someone staffed. Able to.
Great.
You're welcome.
Do we know how they, what made, any kind of idea?
Tapco did something similar in Georgia, for whatever reason, is far away from where Tapco is headquartered in Brown Deer, and they decided to do something closer to home, and so they reached out to us.
So the biggest element appears to be lighting.
Yeah, so it's lighting that it will be, so we'll be able to retrofit all the poles that we have.
LED.
I'm sure they're LED. I don't think they're using a desk in anything anymore. And it's operated by a battery.
It's gonna be candles.
It's operated by a battery. So.
Gasoline.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would just add, I got to use one of these light-up crosswalks when I was in Spain last summer. It was really cool. It just came on automatically. So in a really, it was like a kind of suburban neighborhood, sort of dark, and just this light comes on when you, when you walk is pretty cool.
That's very exciting. This is a really cool thing that came in front of us as we talk about these, you know, these, all the time, these kind of enhancements all the time, so this is great timing.
Sounds great to me as well. Any further discussion on this agenda item? If not, this is not a roll call vote. So all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to item nine D on the agenda, which is consider offer to purchase agreement for redevelopment of forty-four fifty North Oakland Avenue. We have a presenter for this.
I will get this one started. Thank you. We have an offer to purchase that's included within your packet for forty-four forty-eight and forty-four fifty North Oakland Avenue from Spurral Commercial for purposes of affordable housing before submission of the village of Shorewood Phase Two Public Assistance Application, and also to enable the due diligence and meet requirements to apply for WIDA financing to assist as well with subsidizing and providing better tax credits for this parcel. Essentially, we have been working with the Community Development Authority from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four to learn, review different options, to utilize the TID extension funds on affordable housing. This has led to a culmination of the village issuing an RFP for redevelopment of our village-owned parking lots and also approval by the village of a tax increment district creation and financing assistance policy in Policy Forty, which has been the process outlining this development. In, on May thirtieth, the CDA recommended that the phase one application for the redevelopment of this current parking lot owned by the village of North Oakland Avenue proceed to the board. The board as well concurred, and the developer is now back requesting an agreement on an offer to purchase so that that can affirm for WIDA that we are consistent and acknowledge and support that application for tax credits. We have, the village attorney has reviewed the offer to purchase, and there has been a recommendation that the offer to purchase also include wording that contingent upon Spurral being awarded the WIDA funds or other similar financing and execution of the development agreement that the purchase proceed. I'm going to pause at that point. Attorney Baird, do you want to weigh in on any further?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think that those are all standard, relatively standard clauses. These kind of transactions happen all the time. The municipality put out an off, or a request for proposals for this, specifically an ask for proposals for this specific site. So there's been some back and forth concerning the offer. And, you know, it's based upon financial analysis by the developer as to, you know, how they can make it work with below-market rate rents in the property. And there's been some back and forth on that. So really, you know, all this does is, is it's, it's essentially in a sales agreement that says, hey, you know, we're all believe and anticipate you're going to receive either WIDA funds or some other similar financing to make the project viable with respect to affordable housing on this specific site. So, you know, it's essentially contingent upon that and executing what we would, where we would have the details in the development agreement, because we would release funds through the extended TID to help support it as well. And, you know, if something goes sideways, something goes haywire, you know, a year from now and nine months from now, and the market conditions change, you know, there's a natural catastrophe, there, who knows? Um, that if it, it, um, if, if the project doesn't go forward, which we don't anticipate in any way, shape or form, that essentially the, um, property gets, you know, sold back to the municipality for what it, what it sold it for. So, um, you know, really just kind of, you know, that's, that's a contingency that no one in the room and anywhere expects to happen, but it's just one of those things that we put in there to protect the municipality. But again, nobody anticipates that happening. Um, and these are just sort of part and parcel of normal agreements with developers on all these kinds of projects. So, um, really nothing unusual. Um, nothing out of the ordinary that I see here.
Attorney Bayer, where is that? Uh, I, I was going, I was reviewing the agreement and where is the contingency language contained within it? You pointed me to the.
Well, there is, it says finance, it says public financial assistant contingent upon a clause being included. So in other words, we have to finalize the language on that clause.
Okay.
Um, and we've had some emails back and forth. But until we got to the point where we knew whether big picture, the village board was approving this and, and wanting to move forward, then once we got to that step, then we would work out the details on the exact language. But I think we're all agreed in principle on that. And then it's actually the development agreement that will be executed in conjunction with that, that will spell out, um, you know, when we talk about affordable housing, this is how we define that term. There will be X amount of units, you know, offered at, you know, X rate in relation to market value or, you know, however we define affordable housing and expect that project to move forward on a reasonable timetable. And for some reason that the project is not, um, does not go forward or there's, you know, something unanticipated that happens in the market, you know, and it doesn't go forward, then that's where the detail will be in that language where it will come back. So that's why the motion itself is, says that, um, I move to approve the offer to purchase, um, contingent upon, and then there's two things. A, a clause being included that fest the land upon Spurl, um, being awarded the WIDA funds or other similar financing. And B, the execution of the development agreement where those additional items would be included. So that's what protects the, the municipality. So had a great relationship with Spurl and their people on back and forth on that. And, um, I know the attorney that's been working with them. I've worked with them on some other things in Shorewood and, um, um, we've had a good working relationship and a good, uh, good back and forth on this. And I don't anticipate any, any problems as we move forward.
Thank you. So, so the more specific language will come in later, later drafts.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that's why the, that's why the motion is contingent upon a clause being included.
Got it. And at this point, I'll open up the floor to the trustees for any kind of comment. Any trustees have any?
I mean, I'm, I'm gonna vote for it. I've been in favor of the project for a long time and I think this is just a step in, um, making the application for the WIDA funds. So it's, I think this is just kind of the way you have to go if you're building, um, you know, affordable homes, uh, you gotta comply with all those WIDA requirements and timelines and so on. So I, I feel like this is reasonable. I like the, uh, contingency language that protects Shorewood in case it doesn't work out. Uh, so I'm planning on supporting it.
Thank you, trustee McGovern. Any other trustees? Trustee Stockbrand.
I, um, I want to thank the staff and all the volunteers. Trustee Ursink and I were on the CDA, I've been on the CDA for many years, um, for all the work that it's taken to bring us to this point. I can't support it though. Um, there's a lot of things that have changed. I guess to me, the question becomes at this time and in this way and in this place. And there was a lot of, there were a lot of people here, I think it was two weeks ago or a month ago, expressing concerns about the location. And I share a lot of those. I don't want to do anything that might, you know, ideally we'd have a business there that would have underground parking and we wouldn't lose a single spot. I don't want to do anything that would jeopardize the business community. And I also feel for the people who park there. I mean, I think it could be a lot of people. It's probably not a high income group. It's probably people who need their car to get to work or to doctor's appointments. Uh, so the time and the place, the other thing that really makes it difficult for me is if we had a really good transit system and I could say to people, yes, get rid of your car and take the bus, but the county just let us know within the last month that they're reducing services to Shorewood. The county is in a lot of financial trouble. I don't see anything but more transportation cuts coming on the horizon. And so without that kind of a, you know, we're, we're really so linked without that kind of support and being able to offer them something else. It's, I can't support it. The other thing is I think we do have, we are fully built out, but there are other places in the village that are vacant. And we also have a school district that is looking at their schools and their enrollment and the use of their buildings. And so there could be an opportunity here within a year or two um, for possibly a school district space. And so for those reasons, I'll vote no.
Thank you, trustee Stockbrand. Any other trustees?
I just wanted to let you know President McCaig has her hand raised.
Uh.
When you're ready.
Okay. President McCaig.
Thank you, trustee Warren. Um, I am, uh, I, I wanted to echo, um, the thanks that trustee Stockbrand gave for all the um, volunteers and the staff time that has gone into getting us to this point. And I also want to again, thank the village board of twenty twenty for giving us this opportunity by extending the life of TID one to, um, create these funds that are now available. Um, point of clarification for, um, village manager and attorney Bayer, uh, the, should this, um, offer be approved this evening? The developer agreement would come back to the village board with all that finalized language. Is that correct?
Absolutely. The, the village board is the body that would have to, uh, enter into any contract on behalf of the village. So it would definitely have to come back here.
Okay. So the significance of this is that if we do not success, successfully approve this offer to purchase agreement this evening, it's really the same thing as, as, uh, nothing else can move forward. Um, so we wouldn't have the opportunity to review a development agreement. Is that correct?
Well, I, I think that's right. There would be no reason to draft the development agreement because if we're not gonna sell, so, um, you know, yeah, yeah, that's, I think, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it does. All right. Thank you. Um, well, I'm looking forward to supporting this, um, as well. Um, I, I would ask the body if they would consider, uh, lowering the, the price, purchase price um, to something nominal, say a dollar, which is what many municipalities do in transferring municipally owned land um, for the purposes of affordable housing. This would achieve two objectives in my mind. Um, it would demonstrate the willingness of the, of the village to remove barriers to increasing the inventory of affordable units within our municipality, uh, which I believe strengthens the application to WIDA. Um, and in that it's, it just removes that financial barrier. It would also, um, decrease the subsidy request and therefore reserve the majority of our TID one extension funds for future opportunities as trustee Stockbrand, um, identified, you know, there are other spaces, um, that could be utilized in the future. Um, so this is one tool that we have at this time is to consider a lower, um, selling price that would remove, um, reduce the, the need for subsidy and, um, also allow the project to move ahead.
Thank you, President McCaig. And from, from my perspective, I'm, I'm inclined to support this. I, I want to echo, um, what everyone said. It's been a long process with the CDA. It's been, I was a part of the twenty twenty board that approved the extension of the TID and we've looked at virtually, you know, seemingly every alternative. Um, and this is certainly one that, one that I can support moving forward. Uh, this is a necessary step in order to, um, or to move, move forward with the WIDA application. Um, and again, I, as I, as I hinted before, as I, as I asked for before, we certainly need strong contingency language to protect the village. But at this point, I'm ready to support, uh, continue to move this forward. So any other trustees?
Um, you know, I'm still, I'm still generally in support of this project. I have real concerns about a number of issues that have been brought up. The contingent, contingency, contingency language. Not seen any of it, you know, that there have been, I believe, based on my experience living in the village, uh, contracts and buildings that have gone up where the contingency language just wasn't strong enough and came back to really bite this village in the end. So I have real concerns and will want to spend a prolonged period of time going over that, make sure that the village and the taxpayers are protected. I have real concerns about the, what I imagine, uh, our number of lower income residents who rely on that parking, uh, having nowhere to go to park. Um, we can pretend that people don't use cars or we don't want them to use cars or whatever. But this is still a, a car-driven, uh, economy and community. Um, and with the lowering of, um, requirements from development for, uh, off-street parking per unit that, that I was against in the past, but move forward. Uh, there are more cars than ever in that corridor. I have concerns from the business owners in that corridor. I shared a lot of their concerns. You know, I, I want to move forward. I am, I am for affordable housing, but I, I'm going to be very, very clear that I will vote no if this isn't done correctly and those contingencies are not in place to protect the people that are here. The taxpayers that paid into the TID that we're now using. I in no way support lowering the purchase price, uh, given the financial position that this village is in. I would never vote to give this parcel away for a dollar. Um, and I don't think that that changes our commitment to affordable housing in any way. So, you know, this, this is a vote yes to continue the process. But in no way, uh, a yes vote for the end until we have a lot of clarification coming down the pipe.
Thank you, trustee Kudo.
Uh, I share, uh, pretty much all of trustee Kudo's concerns, especially not seeing the contingency clause. You know, I think you, you framed it pretty well. Uh, I was sort of on the fence without seeing that clause, but knowing that we have one more step in this, um, in this process before we get there. I think that's extremely important that we have some very well-defined terms, uh, in that contract. Um, I, I guess my other apprehension in this process is we're missing a trustee this evening and this is a very big sort of vote for our community and, uh, it just, for me, that doesn't feel right. You know, I feel like everybody should be here, uh, and be present during a vote like this to, to potentially sell village property. Um, you know, I know it's not, it's not possible. It's the summertime, but, um, you know, I would be in favor of, of having sort of everybody here at the table to make these decisions. Um, I do have my reservations, uh, at the same time. This is something that we've worked on, um, and, uh, we've put a lot of effort and, and, um, energy into this process. Uh, I would like to, you know, I would like to see it to the next step, but I'm also very, gonna be very sort of hawkish on those, on those terms in that language, um, to protect our village, uh, in, in the next phase of this application. So I, you know, I will be a, a yes this evening, but I will also be very mindful and, and watching what happens with, uh, the terms and, uh, the language put into the contract.
Thank you, trustee, thank you, trustee Ursink. Any members, now that we've gone, we're on the table.
I, I just went, oh, go ahead. Okay. I would just add one more thing on, uh, uh, President McCaig's suggestion on switching to a nominal fee. I, I feel like that's something I would support. And it's because of the, um, you know, this is how it's typically done with, with affordable developments, but also, you know, we do want to use TID funds, twenty-five percent of it for other things like lead laterals. We were talking about that at the committee of the whole earlier. There seems to be consensus on that and, um, you know, I think it would sort of, you know, the village has already paid for this parking lot decades ago. Um, there's never been any proposal to do anything else with it and it would, we'd have more money available to do these other things with that TID fund, TID funding and additional housing, which brings in more revenue for the village ultimately, both through, you know, directly through taxes and, um, making it easier for families that live here than send their kids to the schools here. That brings in more money for our schools to them. So to the extent we, we can help promote more development, more housing in Shorewood, make it easier for people to live here. Um, I'm in favor of that, including, uh, lowering the price of the, of the, um, parcel.
And I don't, and just, just a point of order, are we agendaed for anything like, would that be, because I, I noticed that's not within the, within the context of the, uh, of the motion. Is that a discussion we have next time around or is that a discussion that?
Well, so I, I think you'd have to make a motion to amend the, uh, the offer, but I'm just trying to think procedurally. There's a couple of things. And by the way, part of the reason that this is coming with, and you don't have any additional amended, amended language is just sort of logistics in July and August and there was only one meeting in July and August. And then based upon when the offer from the developer came in, we took a look at it. So, and said, you know, hey, we, you know, we discussed it with staff and said, we think that there's a couple of contingencies that we would want to see added. We'll work on some proposed language. I've drafted some and exchanged some with the other attorney. Um, but it, the part of the reason that we're not there yet is, um, is just logistics and, you know, timelines. But the offer actually came from the developer to buy it. So developers handed the village an offer to purchase it for a set amount. So we have that on the table tonight to either accept that or reject it. You could reject it and then return, um, on a friendly, you know, basis, if you will, if, you know, if you say, well, we want to reject it because we only want to charge you a dollar for it. You know, then you, you, you could move to amend the motion to reject the standing offer to purchase, but counter at a dollar, I suppose. But we don't have the, we don't have that document in front of us. The one we have in front of us is from the developer to purchase it for, is it three hundred and forty?
Thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Thank you very much. I knew it was under three forty. So we're either approving or denying that tonight. So if you want to sell it for a different amount, I would move to reject the offer that's on the table and direct staff to counter at X, whatever that number might be.
Got it.
So procedurally, I think that's, that's how we would, uh, that's how we would proceed. And the other point I was gonna make is that, um, you can do absolutely anything you want one way or the other on this. I mean, you're gonna move forward or not, but it is this body that sent out the request for proposals for this specific site. So if you don't do that, there's, you know, if you don't move forward with something, there's potentially a price to be paid for that down the road with other developers when we send out RFPs. But anyway, that, that's all.
Thank you. I'll get to members of the public as soon as we've gone. Any, Danny?
I get, I understand your point, uh, attorney Bayer, but at the same time, I was willing to go down the road, do the due diligence, see what it looked like, see what the numbers would be like and to get community feedback. But it was not until I had done all of that that I could make an informed decision. So I'm not at all affected by any notion that voting no against this would in any way keep us from doing something else with the site down the road. I.
Thank you, trustee Stockbrand.
I agree.
Any other comments from the trustees? If not, I'll take public comment. I would ask you.
Trustee Warren?
Yes.
If I may. Um, I just wanted to say that since, um, given attorney Bayer's, uh, clarification on procedure, um, I would support moving ahead with, um, the, uh, the offer as presented this evening. Um, and not consider a change in, in selling price. So thank you for that clarification. Um, and I won't make a motion until after we've taken, um, public comment. Thank you.
President McCaig. There's no more from the trustees. I will take public comment. I would ask you to state your name and address prior to offering comment and please step up, step up to the microphone.
My name is Christine Sueda. I live at four one one four North Lake Drive. I was here for all the, the CDA meeting and the other meetings. And as I've expressed before, this is not a smart financial decision for the board. Has evaluation been done for the land? Can anybody, did anybody do that to find out how much it's worth?
I made a motion, it failed.
How can you go ahead with making a decision like this without even knowing the value of that land? It's irresponsible. Giving the TIF money and something that I called the corner lot that's for lease. They said they would sell it for 1.5 million. So it's got to be somewhere in that range. And I think it's irresponsible to sell it for 340,000 or whatever the amount is. That's valuable land and we were here till 10:30 at night in the last meeting. Everybody except three people said they didn't like it. And yet you guys are continuing to proceed? Why don't you listen to the people who came? They waited till 10:30 at night to speak. I think it's not right that the way this is being handled. It's not a wise financial decision. It has nothing to do with whether you support affordable housing or not. But the Affordable Housing Survey that was done in 2019 stated that the housing and stuff was much higher and the rentals was 40%. Forty percent of the people wanted rental. If you're saying that you're going to get more students, well, how much do you get per pupil? I think it's $724 per pupil. That does not in any way honor balance financially with the money that we're giving. And Whitefish Bay is doing the same thing and they paid nothing. Why do we need to pay $3 million of taxpayer money if Whitefish Bay can do the same deal with this gentleman and pay nothing? We're being taken advantage of. It's not a smart financial decision. And I really think all the, the people who came out last time and expressed that this place was full. And yet you're ignoring them. I don't think it's right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn it back to the trustees. Any further comments or discussion?
I just want to make a quick note that this money is TIF money that was set aside for affordable housing only. It can only be spent on affordable housing. We, ma'am, we've been down this road. We've already earmarked 25% of that, which is allowable for us for, for future use on beautifying or improving the home stock. And that's a, an item we already spoke about this evening. 25% of that money can be set aside for, for use in that, in that process. And we've, and we're doing that right now.
I'm sorry, if you're gonna, you have to be at the mic.
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna say we, we have to
Just for the record, you should be at the mic.
The last time I was here, you had somebody presenting the test fits for use of the DPW property and it not one example was for single family housing. It was all biased for rentals and these were also affordable housing. So you can use the TIF money for this if you need.
I'm not going to go back, though, though it's not true though. There was at least 10 examples and there was condos. There was apartments and nothing was affordable housing.
And I, I just, just to, as the chair, I appreciate your concerns. I hear your concerns, but I want to keep us on track. What we're, what we're discussing here is whether to move forward with this agreement and get, and get the contingency language for, for next meeting. So I want to keep us laser focused on our task at hand here, which is whether to accept or, or reject this, the continuation of this project. And I thank you for your comments. Do you have any further discussion from the trustees or do I have a motion from the floor?
I'll make a motion. I moved to approve the offer to purchase 4448 and 4450 North Oakland Avenue from Spurral Commercial LLC for the purpose of building affordable housing before the submission of a Village of Shorewood Phase Two application for a public financial assistant contingent upon A, a clause being included that vests the land only upon Spurral Commercial LLC being awarded the WIDA funds or other similar financing. And B, the execution of a development agreement that commits Spurral Commercial LLC to building the affordable housing project.
I'll second. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we're doing a regular vote, not a roll call vote. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five to one.
What's the timetable for the final decision from the board?
Well, there would be a Phase Two application, due diligence on behalf of the developer, submission of the WIDA tax credit application. And then there would need to be drafted in a development agreement. My understanding is that the WIDA tax credits, our application was submitted in December.
The concept application goes in December and if it, if WIDA approves the concept, then it moves to a full application in March. And it would be, the tax credits would be approved in May of 2026. So this December, 2025, application 2026, approval, final approval, May 2026.
And when will we see the first bit of the?
I think we already, we already started working on it. Probably talk to your council tomorrow about that. For the next
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, I'll just say publicly, I have no intention of developing this site if it's not affordable housing.
That's fine.
And so
It was September 4th?
It won't, it won't be in
Wednesday, September 3rd.
Okay. Okay. Just don't want to go too far with the discussion.
No, no.
We've already voted. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you for your comments. The next order of, I'll move us on to the next order of business, which is nine E. Consider service levels for the 2026 budget. We have a presenter for, I was assuming it's you.
This is just a, a follow up to the committee of the whole. As you know, we don't vote in committee of the whole. But we did want to memorialize this step as a part of the budget process as it was laid out in the communications plan. And at the last meeting in July, we had a discussion with regards to service levels. And follow up to that, there was information requests regarding various analysis and, and studies that have been done in the past within different village departments, which was provided. In sum, on the seventh, the board met and discussed the service level, levels and possible reductions and department efforts to evaluate the efficiencies and effectiveness over the last five years. And in conclusion, the board relayed that a reduction of service is a large initiative and not timely for implementation in the 2026 budget. So back here tonight is a recap of, you know, that discussion, the timeline that we are on, that shows how where August 4th falls with relationship to the budget process, the information that was provided in follow up. And then consistent with the consensus that was provided on July 7th, there's a possible motion to defer a reduction of services within the scope of the 2026 budget as it's a large initiative and not timely for implementation in this budget cycle.
So this is really a memorialization of our conversation and
Correct.
Got it. Right. With that, I will open it up to discussion from the floor. Any trustees want to? Any trustees have anything or want to make a motion? Trustee Stoker Brand?
When we originally talked about looking at service levels, I can't remember what month it was, but I'm pretty sure that I said at that point, it would be great if each department head could come up with, let's say, I like choices. Give me choices. Give me three ideas you have for reducing costs in your department. And so imagine my dismay when we went through the exercise last month. And it, it just felt to me like it was every department coming forward and saying, everything you do is important. We can't cut anything. So it leaves me wondering, how do we go at this next year? I, I feel that there's going to have to be a different approach. An, an honest, authentic push to see if we want to look for efficiencies, if we want to make some reductions. I don't see, if we put this off, I, I just wonder how do we not end up in the same place a year from now? That's what I need to do.
Thank you. Trustee Kudo?
Yeah, to sort of go off of what trustee Stoker Brand just said, you know, it, I keep thinking about the response. You know, when I asked who determines whether or not these departments are running efficiently? And the response was department head. That doesn't work for me, frankly. You know, I know we've talked about different departments. I was very appreciative of the fact that department heads came up, you know, planning at BART, you know, was great. You know, I of course would love to do more, but I can do with what I have. I understand department budgeting. I understand everyone fights for every dollar that they can get for their department. No one wants to reduce their department budget. I totally understand all of that. But I, you know, I have a real problem with us not being, us not looking for efficiencies or trying to determine if there are better ways to, to do the business that we're in, right? So especially when we're looking at, and I know I brought this up last time, looking at DPW, we're trying to determine if, you know, where we're going to have a new yard, if we're going to have a new yard, what it's going to look like. What are the services we're going to have to have there? All this type of stuff. And there's nothing that I can point to that says this is exactly what we need. This is exactly what it's going to look like. These are all the, you know, the efficiencies. This is what we should be looking for, for 10 years down the road. And that concerns me, right? That we are making hu- huge decisions about any number of things in this village and I, I'm missing a key piece of information. So, you know, I'm going to be pushing for, in one of the next meetings, a study of DPW just to see where we're at and if it, if we are, no, it's
Another study of DPW?
No, Arthur, not a study of what to do with the land, a study of are we doing this efficiently or not?
Who's going to do this study?
Let's, let's, trusty
We'll have that conversation when the time comes.
Elon Musk?
We'll do that conversation when the time comes and either you win the vote or you'll lose it. And that's how votes work. But we're going to have the conversation.
Gotcha.
So, you know, I mean, it's, there are, again, a lot of big things that are happening at DPW, a lot of the big things that are happening at departments. It's not as transparent as I would like and I want to have that conversation. And I'm going to push for it. And if I win, I win. If I lose, I lose. It's not the end of the world. Either way, but for right now, you know, the way that we're, the way that we're doing this and the way that we're determining service levels doesn't work for me.
And, and, you know, I just, if you know, if I'm just kind of going around the circle, so I'll come to you, trustee Ursink. But, you know, I, I do appreciate what both of you are saying. I mean, I think within the scope here, there's, I think we need to kick this off to next year. You know, I think, I think this is a clear motion and it's one I support. I, I would support more benchmarking, you know, a deeper look. I think we need to continue to look at all options as we have this kind of budget crunch. So we're going to have to take a deep, hard look at things. But again, for the purposes of tonight, this is not something that can be done with the next budget cycle. It's going to be a budget cycle next year, but certainly I would support kind of ideating out how we want to look at this, what we want to do, whether it's more studies, more benchmarking, figuring that out. But for tonight, I would support the motion on the table. Trustee Ursink, I'll go to you now.
You know, in this, in this brief here, we, we have, we've done a study. We've done a study of our police department and the study says we, you know, need to reduce staff to 23. And we're currently, we are 25 staff members in 2020. We're at 25 right now. We did a study. It says bring it down to 23 and we have not done that. Whereas clear evidence said we, that's something we could do right now. But nobody really has, nobody really has that, wants to take that initiative to go to the police station, to show the police department and say, let's cut two staff members. DPW has just been constantly under attack and it, and it, and it goes back, it goes back a decade. It goes back six, 10, 10 years to previous administrations. They've been cut. They've been, I mean, you walk into the DPW yard, it's falling apart. They're doing everything they can possibly do with duct tape, gum and paper clips. And yet there's still some efficiencies that we can find. It's like, they are doing so much for this community with, with absolutely the, the minimum they can do and they live in, they work and pretty much live in, in just terrible conditions that have been pretty much said are, you know, you know, should be like, they, they should be, there's violations, health violation. Like there's this code violations all over the place. So they have to deal with safety issues. They have to deal with all that every single day in order to do the most amazing job. I mean, I think, you know, I can't, I can't say what an incredible job this team does of, of DPW with, with very little. And it's very frustrating to hear how much like, they're just constantly under attack. And it's, it's very frustrating for me. Being around the DPW, being a part of this group and being chair of the DPW for as long as I have, I just, it, it really is triggering to hear that, that, you know, everybody here thinks that there's all this waste and inefficiency at a department where they, they're basically just duct taping everything together because they don't have what they need. This department's been under, under attack since previous administrations, been cut, everything's been, let's contract that out. And let's, let's cut these jobs. Let's cut, like, everybody wants to cut everything, but if we look at surveys here, people love the services that they get from this department. So, you know, we're working towards rebuilding this department. We're looking towards rebuilding a DPW facility where we're going to have built in efficiencies. We're going to have those conversations. Look at the Berrientos report, you know, the Berrientos created a whole, you know, layout and, you know, potential of what that could look like. That report's out there. That, that work has been done. And as we change, environments change, those are things that we can work towards of creating a more sustainable, a more green thinking department where, you know, sustainability and efficiencies are really thoughtful and taking place. But if you want to talk about inefficiencies, they're inefficiencies because they're working under extreme conditions. They're working outside in the winter on trucks. Things are falling apart because we don't have the right storage. So we want to talk about that. Let's build a new facility. Let's get the, the, the vehicles in storage where they belong. And I think we're going to see a lot of savings when that happens.
And I would just urge us to stay, stay in scope here as to what the discussion is. I mean, and I don't think, just to be clear, and I'll go to President Mckay in a second. It was not my impression to, I don't think, I'm certainly not saying there's waste everywhere here. I think we're more saying, you know, I, I want the information to help make the decision, but
Yeah, that was my position as well. I mean, the sort of hyperbole aside, there was no attack. We are working with taxpayer dollars. We are elected. We are responsible for making sure that those are spent efficiently and effectively. And, you know, setting aside the fantastic job that the department does, there's no reason to not look at the department, at every department all the time. So, you know, this is, this is not a, DPW is awful and all the staff there are wasting money and they're, it's horrible. And it's, this is a, we have a job and a responsibility to make sure that we're spending the taxpayer dollars in the most appropriate way. And I'm going to continue to ask those questions and ask that that happened. If that's perceived as an attack. Sorry, that's not, that wasn't the intent.
Let's, 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 let's let President McKay get in on the conversations that she's been, she's, she's had her end up patiently for a while. So let's, let's let her way into.
I actually on second thought, I don't think I have anything to add. Because it's, it's a little bit out of scope, only that I would happily set an agenda item for the fall to go over all the information that the village manager has provided that, to set a baseline of benchmarks and efficiencies and outside recommendations for operational staff that we have on hand. And clearly we need to do that as a group in open meeting rather than relying on us to review it on our own time. But for that, that doesn't pertain to this motion this evening. So I would look forward to supporting the motion when it's made.
I, I would agree. I mean, the motion this evening is relatively limited in scope. I think designing what, what this is going to look like, is it down the road item that we, we, we won't get to tonight? We won't resolve it tonight, nor is it agendaed for tonight. Any further
So with, I guess with that, I would take, I would make a motion if you would take one?
I will, I will take one.
Okay. I move, I move to defer a reduction of services within the scope of the 2026 budget as it is a large initiative and not timely for implementation in this budget cycle.
I'll second that. If a motion and a second, do we have any further comments? Trustee Stoker Brand?
I think there was a comment made that we refuse to look at the police department and cut. The, the WISE study showed recommendation was 23 staff. 2025, we have 2025, we have 25. I'm willing to look at that department. I'm willing to look at any department. Nothing is off the table for me. And so I hope we're kicking this down the road for 2026. I hope we can have a meaningful discussion with the police chief and I hope she can come forward. If we say we'd like three options, give us three options to make a cut. If it means cutting to 23, where would she recommend that they come? I don't know. That's why I need to have the recommendation from staff. That's why I made the request. That's why it's so disappointing.
And I hear everyone, I think that this is something we'll design going forward. I just want to keep, I want to keep us within the agenda item. But I do, I do appreciate the thoughts and I appreciate the passion. And I think it's certainly something that will lead to a good discussion when we agenda it for how we're going to approach in the next budget cycle.
Just to be clear, we're not going to have the discussion with President McKay in the fall for the 2026 budget. Is that correct? Because we're voting on a motion now to not do it. So I really don't understand why we'd have that discussion this fall when we have so many issues.
It would be for the 2027.
Yeah, it would be next, next year. So if I said 2026.
We wouldn't do it this fall. I believe you said we'd do it this fall. I don't understand your timing.
I believe she, what, and I'm not going to totally speak for President McKay, but I believe what President McKay says, we can review the information that has been provided in years past as a whole group to better understand that information. I don't think she was speaking to having a, a consideration of service levels in 2027, fall of 2025.
Yeah. And, and that's probably a committee, the whole discussion, I would imagine, something like that.
Hopefully, hopefully.
So.
Thank you. I would agree with that, with that recap. To be clear, what I'm hearing is that we don't have a process to consider service level reductions within the course of the budget cycle, the budget process that we currently and historically have used. Because that has not been part of the part of the process. So we need to build towards that, taking in all the input that we've received tonight and in the last few meetings.
Right. Thank you, President McKay. So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? So, sorry, checking every time. Hearing, hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. I have two, one. Next on the agenda is nine F, consider recommendation for mobile parking payment system. Can this you or is this?
I'm, I'm happy to provide an update on this item. This was reviewed, mobile parking payments analysis in the system was reviewed by the Budget and Finance Committee. And they have recommended, an RFP was issued, our proposals were reviewed, analysis was concluded. And they have recommended that the village not proceed with evaluation of a paid meter analysis and software implementation. Or another alternative would be to move to reject all proposals and proceed with communicating at the end of 25 and 26 with residents, businesses and motorists to infer, inform and solicit information about key aspects of a paid parking program, including days, hours, hourly rates, transaction fees, time, limits, et cetera. Restarting the mobile parking payment procurement in mid 2026 to select a vendor and targeting January 2027 for the implementation of paid parking along with 400 spaces along Oakland, Capitol, Edgewood and Lake. And then monitoring motor, motorist behavior, community attitudes and financial performance during 2027 to identify possible modifications to the program in future years.
And, and just to be clear, that second motion was the recommendation of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Pardon me. Yes, thank you for that correction. And really at the, at the, you know, we list this in the overview. We call out, we learned a lot through this process. If you didn't think that you knew a lot about parking, we now know a lot more about parking than we have before. Every year I feel like we peel the onion on this, but in consensus, you know, one of the main thoroughfares of which you would actually obtain revenue from is North Oakland Avenue, and that's going under construction in 2026. And there was a strong desire in the group not to complicate that. But then also bring into play that there, you know, our AIM system that currently is our software that we utilize for all other parking permits in the village will go up for review in the 2026 year. So running something concurrently with that may have advantage. And last, you know, we also reflected as a group on the fact that we really do need to do more public information and communication and, and the topic in general. We've been talking about it here. But, and I've been, I feel like I talk about it at every meeting I go to with a different neighborhood group or the bid, but I think generally is in a community, we haven't taken a pulse in terms of some education and options in terms of why we would look at it and what it could potentially do. Or what it could potentially harm. And so the committee wanted to be thoughtful in terms of how we, we sought different points of input.
Thank you. Do, do we have any, any discussion from the trustees or I can make a motion? I'll make, I think I can make a motion from the chair. I move to reject all proposals and proceed, and proceed with communicating in 2025, 2026 with residents, businesses and motorists to inform and solicit information about key aspects of a paid parking program, including days, hours, hourly rates, transaction fees, time limits, et cetera. Restarting the mobile parking payment procurement in mid 2026 and select a vendor, targeting January 2027 for the implementation of paid parking along the approximately 400 spaces along Oakland, Capitol, Edgewood and Lake. Monitoring motorist behavior, community attitudes and financial performance during 2027 to identify possible modifications to the program in future years.
Second.
If a motion and a second, any just further discussion? trustee Kudo?
I'll just say I've been a vote yes to kill it for this year and continue to vote parking per, parking, paying for parking anywhere in the village for the remainder of the time.
Dead.
Never dead enough.
Thank you, trustee Kudo. Any further discussion?
I'm just curious on the timing of this, you know, we're, we're heading into budget season and looking at all these different options for revenue or, you know, we were discussing service cuts. I mean, it is, it is quite a bit of revenue to just kind of hunt for another year, you know? And the, you know, I understand we're going to bring, we're going to look at it again next year. So, you know, that's probably makes sense. But it just, it seems like, you know, this is really valuable. We give it away for free. A lot of the revenue would come from people that don't even live in Shorewood and you'll use our services and so on. So, I would hope that at some point we can implement something like this because it is something that has real value.
Trust me, trusty stock brand?
As someone who sat in with staff on this issue, it was just the construction of North Oakland. It just seemed to be a deal breaker regarding the timing. Because as the local expert, Mike, I can't remember his last name, I'm sorry, indicated, you know, what, what you really want to do is go into it. It would be a pilot, obviously. And so you want to set yourself up for really getting data you can count on. And that would mean having Oakland Avenue functioning so that you could really know, well, is it working or is it not? I mean, that's like our busiest corridor. So just because of the construction is the only reason that I would, I'm supporting delaying it. We have good data. If we go in with a pilot, if we go in with a pilot project in 2027, we'll have all the corridors functioning, road, road construction will be gone forever and we will know for sure what parking will look.
That makes.
Agreed. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consider policy 50 credit card policy.
The policy before you is quite simply a policy in which we retrieve credit card costs, which we are currently now paying from the users primarily in the general fund, the parking and permits and fees. So if you, if you have any, I don't know if you read it, you have any questions?
And this, this is coming from the finance committee recommending approval of the policy.
Yes.
As of the, on the July 7th, from the July 7th meeting. So any discussion?
As someone who has been promoting this for a couple of years now, you know, it's not like we're making money. We're just recovering the charges that that the, that the banks are paying us. So I have no moral qualm about it. When I think about this, one thing that I wish we could improve some way, and I don't know how we can, is the street light fee. So the street light fee is on the utility bill. And the utility bill, the PSC already puts that fee into, into the, it's baked into the number that we can charge. And because it's when we approve the street light fee, we approved it to go on the utility bills to save money and make it easier. Ideally, we would get our money back from that fee too, but I'm ready, I'm willing to let this go because it's, it just seems to be the best way to go right now.
Thank you, trustee Stoker.
So that part will not be, that fee will not be included in the recovering. We will still take that, take that on as a village or the, the bank, if someone pays their street light fee with a credit card, we're going to pay that two to three.
Isn't it just needed though? I mean, it's technically.
It's in this, we built the BSNA utility billing system and to like, just take that out and say, to ask a property owner to it'd be very complicated, pull that out.
So it's, it's just one stop shop.
Right.
Any further discussion or a motion?
I'm ready to make a motion, ready to entertain.
Yes.
I move to recommend adoption of policy 50 villages credit card fee policy for public payments.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we will consider another policy, policy number 51, the fixed asset policy.
The fixed asset policy is being presented to you as just a vehicle to plan for future asset expenditures by setting, by giving the opportunity for the board to set aside an amount for future defined by by the, the future cost and setting aside a certain amount every year. So basically amortizing forward rather than backwards the cost of future capital expenditures.
And just to be clear, this was recommended by the finance committee. And one thing we, we made clear during that discussion is there's still flexibility when it comes to budget time. This doesn't obligate us to spend money in a certain way. This is rather making sure that we know and put aside funds that will be used for assets into the future.
It's a, yes, it's, the, the staff is, it's a tool for the staff to present to the board, you know, what we're reserving or what we're, our capital fund is being reserved for.
trustee Stoker.
So I voted negative on this in the committee, and I think the thing that, I was reading this again today and that's not exactly what, it's not what it says. It says these funds will not be used for operating expenses or other capital needs. It really is going to limit us going forward. Like we're having this discussion now about what can we use the street light fee? What can we use the wheel tax? What can, we need some flexibility here. We've got issues have come up. What if there's a year where there's a pandemic? What if there's a year, there's an 8% inflation spike? This locks us in with that money. It can only stay, it can only be used for those, you know, and so I'm voting no again, because I think, you know, we have a policy that has worked. I understand it comes to some tough budget decisions at that time of year, but this, this limits us when we might need flexibility. I can't say, okay, you know, I think I'd rather give everybody a 4% increase and we're going to delay the lift truck, we're going to delay the bucket truck a year. I, I would not want to put a future trustee or myself in that position. And if we, if we can take out all the language here that says these funds will not be used for operating expenses or other capital needs, I can go along with that. There's another place that says these funds will be set aside and tracked in a dedicated capital account and used only to purchase or replace equipment. I'm not comfortable with that.
Trustee Stoker Brand? Trustee, you're sync?
You know, this one, I, I'm just, so this came from finance. I, I just want to get a clear picture of how we got here. I, I tend to agree with trustee Stoker. And we've been through a lot on this village board and, and having absolute flexibility in budgets is, is absolutely sort of key at times. I just, how did, how did this get through finance or did it not get through finance? And what's, what's a little bit, and I'm, I'm sure the background's in here, but I, I'm not.
Well, I guess, I guess my, my understanding, and attorney barrel, turn to you on this, is that we, policies by, by, by their very nature can't, they don't restrict us from, from allocating the funds as we see fit. I do, I would share trustee Stoker's concerns if this, if this tied us to a certain outcome.
It, it's not restricting funds. If, 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 if we say that funds will be restricted, that's totally different than assigning balances to to a certain expenditure in the future.
Then why does the language say can only be used for? I'm not comfortable with that at all. It can only be used for thi- this equipment. The funds will not be used for operating expenses or other capital needs. It's very explicit here. I don't know why you would approve this if you don't, if you want complete flexibility at budget time. I, I don't.
I'd love to hear from you, sir.
Well, the intent, that's not the intent of the policy. There's zero weight. The attention of the policy is a planning tool to present to the, the board as, as part of the budget process, what we are budgeting for in the capital budget. The future, you know, we have to put aside monies for the future. This is done in North Shore. It's done at Puywalki. So it, it's just a planning tool, really? So recognizing that it's not the intent, and I'm just trying to sort of help us move along a little bit here, recognizing that it's not the intent and that other boards in the future could read it literally, could do whatever they decide to do. Is there a way to amend the language? Yeah, to amend the language to, to soothe your concerns, trustee Stoker.
Yeah. So like number four, equipment replacement funding. The second sentence, these funds will be set aside and tracked in a separate, in a dedicated capital account, period. Remove the part that says and used only to purchase or replace equipment. And in the part where it says, separate accounting, the last sentence, just remove it. These funds will not be used for operating expenses or other capital needs. I would recommend those two changes. If we have to pass this, I.
I mean, am I correct in assuming that this is basically, we're setting up a savings account where a rainy day fund or planning for things down the road and, and there seems to be general agreement among at least a few of us that that's a good thing, that we should be doing that, but the language might be a little bit too tight.
Yes, that's, yes.
So maybe we could loosen the language a little bit. I have no problem with trustee Stoker's amendments. It allows for what seems to be the most amount of flexibility and allows for future boards to not be penned into a policy that, you know.
I, I, I concur. And I, I think that if we, can we make a motion with, with trustee Stoker brands?
Maybe we should defer this and I can work on the language with staff and we can bring it back in September.
I would support a motion to defer to, to, to try to loosen up the language a little bit. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a really heavy, heavy lift, but I would, I would support that.
Does that mess with any timing or anything? Could we, because we're back in a month? I mean, we're okay. You don't need, we don't need to have the policy to do the budget. So. Okay. Then yeah, I would be in favor of deferring as well.
I'll take a motion from.
I move to defer the consideration of policy 51 fixed asset policy.
I'll second that.
Just as discussion, it sounds like a great idea. I mean, it sounds.
Just as discussion, it sounds like a great idea, I mean, it sounds like it's a smart way to do this, we just want to make sure we get the language correct.
Yeah, and to your point, we don't want to have something where we, future boards read it literally and all of a sudden they don't have the flexibility they need to budget.
And there's folks who read things with strict interpretation, there's folks who don't. Let's have the most flexibility.
I agree. Motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for the work on this.
Have one more policy to consider here tonight. I can, I will move us on to nine I, consider policy number fifty two, complete streets.
Thank you, trustee Warren, I can give a brief introduction if you'd like, so the complete streets policy was first recommended at the village as part of the transportation and parking analysis back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. It was deferred for action until the bike ped plan could be updated, which I think you all are familiar with happened last year with respect to a lot of public engagement. And work with the Parks and Public Spaces Committee and the Bike and Ped Subcommittee. So within twenty twenty four, concurrently with that plan, we did also discuss policy, discussion for complete streets. We opted to adopt the bike ped plan first so that we could finalize the complete streets policy. That happened earlier this year with a unanimous approval from both of wallet. Discussion with the bike ped Subcommittee then taking it to Parks and Public Spaces for approval. It was taken to the Public Works Committee back in July. Two tweaks were requested and added to the policy. Just clarifying a notification procedure that was requested to stakeholders and a documentation of exceptions to the Public Works Committee. In general, the policy dedicates or represents a commitment to complete streets within the village, which is something that has long been discussed and, and hoped for by many people. It identifies the scope and applicability of when complete streets should be reviewed. It identifies responsible stakeholders for with whom we are seeking comments on capital, capital projects that have impacts to our roadways. It does outline priorities and design standards. And most importantly, it discusses an implementation process and schedule within which comments and projects can be identified, so. If by chance those projects can't be completed, there is an exception policy, and then importantly, there's an annual reporting procedure as well, so that every January, the report will be drafted so that the board can see the actions of what has taken place with respect to the adoption of the policy, so. As I mentioned, it, it was largely worked on in twenty twenty four, refined early twenty twenty five and comes to you with approval, recommendations for approval from Bike Ped, Parks and Public Spaces and Public Works Committee.
Thank you. Any discussion amongst the trustees or trustee Ursink?
I can make a motion. I move to recommend adoption of policy fifty two, complete streets.
Thank you.
Motion in a second, any further discussion?
I would just like to thank everybody who worked so hard on this staff and the Bike and Pet Safety Committee and the Parks and, part of the Parks and Open Spaces Committee too. Their work has been diligent and long-serving.
Agreed, it was, it was great to work with them.
Trustee Stokerbrand? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any, I? Any opposed? Motion, motion carries.
Thank you, Bart.
We will now move on to the report of the village officials, and for that I will turn it over to our village president.
Thank you, the first two items are linked, they're board materials or meeting materials. And then the third item is just a, a list of accolades that our village clerk is in the process of receiving. She's achieved two certifications, one via the International Institute of Municipal Clerks and one via Wisconsin. And on August twenty first, Rebecca will be administrating Clerk Harrell's Oath of Office as the incoming president of the Wisconsin Municipal Clerks Association. And I just want to recognize Toya's achievements over the past several years and the leadership that she is contributing to move this profession ahead in the state of Wisconsin, and I appreciate all that she does to do that. And if anyone has any questions, further questions of Clerk Harrell, I will direct you to her. It does not.
Asking the important questions.
Lucky to do a job.
That I will accept.
And next, I think the, okay, any village trustees with a report?
Yeah, I went to the legal Wisconsin municipalities summer meeting in Green Bay this week. Really interesting, you know, good panels, met a lot of people. There was a presentation from the Department of Revenue about the state of the economy, which had some really interesting stuff. Just really quickly, you know, usually when I go to these things, there's really kind of depressing demographic data about Wisconsin shrinking and people leaving, and it looks like that's been somewhat reversed the last couple of years, we're actually gaining population, both from people moving here and births outnumbering deaths, so we're, we're doing a lot better than a lot of other states in the region, I thought that was really helpful, and I can, I can share the packet with Rebecca and she can forward it around, maybe if anyone's interested to look at it.
Thank you. Trustee Ursink?
Yeah, so Shorewood Farmers Market has, is just continuing to grow, I mean, I think, you know, spending the last couple of weekends there, just seeing, I, I mean, we've reached just thousands and thousands of people. You know, fortunately, right now, our, you know, a very popular program that we have at the market is our SNAP benefits. We see that being utilized, you know, very frequently, we also have a market match program where where people come in for their SNAP benefits and we match up to thirty dollars, and that's a program that Milwaukee County has, has been working on to help with. So we've seen that program just be tapped into and used very frequently, so fingers crossed that we can continue that, and I think, you know, next year might be a bit more of a challenge. But we, we had the Shorewood Women's Club as our guests this week at our community booth, and there was a lot of traffic and they were pitching the heck out of the Shorewood Women's Club there, so. Fantastic job with that group and would love to continue the conversation with getting some of our trustees to come sit down so we can kind of talk about the, some of the issues that pertain to our community through that audience. We're starting to see about, you know, feels like a thousand, thousands of people come through, you know, the market every week, and it just keeps growing and growing, so. Now that it's maybe cooling off, it might be a better time as we get into fall, but would entertain that conversation if anybody would like to join me at the market to talk Shorewood.
Thank you, trustee Ursink.
I'm in. We can debate things.
And eat things.
Why does it, why do I got to see you every time?
Oh, well, yeah.
Any, any other, with that, any other reports?
Now, now I'll move on to the village manager with our two, two thousand, our twenty twenty six budget communication plan.
First meeting of each month, I, the plan is updated. So not many new significant changes since the last time it was provided to you, but upcoming this month, I'm gonna be presenting to bid members about just some of the current status of projects in the village. At a meeting at Three Lions at four o'clock on the twenty fifth, so I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you. And with that, we move to future items of consideration, and we have trustee Kudo, who is considering, bringing up considering shades for streetlights, I remind everyone, this is not for discussion, it's just whether, whether to discuss this in the future.
I don't want to discuss this now either, so this is lovely. So we, I think most of us, if not all of us, have gotten emails and I've gotten other correspondence from members of the community who are very excited about streetlights, about the efficiency and the bright, some are excited about the brightness, others are not, that's the way these things work. But there have been some concerns about the, some of the streetlights being a little bit more spotlight, a little bit less streetlight. And bleeding into the, more into the homes that they, they are in front of, so. I don't know what the process is, I don't know if there is a process, I don't know what we could or should do about it. But I'd like to talk about it in DPW and just see what our options might be, if there are any. That's the, but I know we got that email about that one house, I went to that house. Maybe not everyone got it, but there was an email, the photo of the house in the northwestern part of the village and a very bright house at night. So let's, just hoping we can talk about it and see if there's anything we can do about it.
Makes sense, and this requires a motion, right?
Correct.
I'd like to.
Which should designate.
Okay, so I'd like to move to have a discussion regarding brightness and shading and what have you, general operations of the streetlights in the Public Works Committee at a date to be determined by the Chair of Public Works.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in, actually two seconds on that one. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna learn that committee, I don't know. You have to go out every night and draw the shade on your house.
Okay, now with that, the only thing left on our agenda is a closed session item, so I will need someone to make a very long motion to get us into closed session.
I'd like to, oh, go ahead, please.
I move that the village board consider moving into closed session pursuant, pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five one E to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of a public properties, of public properties where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to discuss prospective properties for the new Department of Public Works site.
I will second that. I believe this is a, I believe this is a roll call vote.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
President McKay?
Yes.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
Trustee Stokerbrand?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
For those of you on the call. We're going to be stopping that, this regular part of the meeting, so I believe Claudia, you're the only one on the call, who's not a member of the board. So I just wanted to let you know that we're not going to be, oh, there you go. Reconvening, oh, thank you, okay.